... Thank you, Mr. Bellamy!
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. Calling this meeting of Charlottesville City Council to order. We begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, one note just on the crowding. It looks like we've...I know that the Assistant City Manager came up and spoke before. It looks like everyone were okay. We have an overflow room at the Neighborhood Development Services Room back there with simulcast. I understand there's forty or fifty folks back there. We're gonna make sure that we're...right now, I think, a little bit...we're right at the capacity for the fire marshal, which is important. So, we're gonna make sure that we're okay with our fire marshal rules. If other folks come, we're gonna ask them to go back to the room right in the back, and you'll still be able to be in touch with everything live. We have a number of folks who have signed up for the public comment, and all those folks, I assume, are here. We also do have a public comment period after the end of this meeting. We have a lot of activity tonight that is...we have a...well, I'll talk later about when we get into the agenda, but we have a number of slots for speaking about the Ragged Mountain Reservoir issue, and those right here. But we also do have a Matters by the Public after this meeting is concluded, which anybody can speak at as well. So, Ms. Rice, what do you call the role?
Here.
Mr. Bellamy?
Present.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Sekus?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
Okay. We are gonna begin with awards and recognitions, and then some announcements. So, if we could begin just with any awards and recognitions. I have one, and then we'll go down a couple of announcements. We have the VSA Poetry Book Presentation. I think there might be some folks here. So, under the umbrella of the city's therapeutic recreation program, VSA Charlottesville and Albemarle promotes and develops opportunities for art and creative expression for people of all ages and abilities, with a focus on serving individuals with disabilities. Region 10's Dual Recovery Center will present the recently published poetry book and read a short sample from their original submissions. Are there readers here to... Brown, are you gonna come forward? Thank you.
The participants in the Dual Recovery Center's educational program have greatly enjoyed doing creative writing for VSA with Rose Williams. Ms. Williams comes to the DRC on a regular basis and leads creative writing sessions. It has been amazing to see individuals who do not consider themselves to be writers producing pieces that affect the group when recited. Some are lighthearted and humorous, many are reflective, and most are very illuminating to the individual's life experiences. The writing program has helped individuals get to know each other on a more meaningful level, and I venture to say it has helped individuals in the program get to know themselves better as well. In addition, the VSA Poetry Book celebration has been a profound experience, giving everyone who has published a chance to challenge themselves by reading their writing in public. We are deeply grateful for the VSA program and its investment in DRC members as the artists they know now themselves to be.
Thank you.
My name's Jeffrey Bogard, and the title of my book is called...
Can you answer your question, Michael?
Sorry, my name's Jeffrey Bogard, and the title of my book is called Poems Called The Cat. There was a cat who looked like a rat. It likes coal. It makes me feel old. Even the cat had a hat.
I just wanna say that Jeff has, I think, five pieces that were published in a book like this year.
Thank you.
And if anyone would like to read the rest of them, they're in the... Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other announcements by my colleagues. Ms. Galvin?
Yes, and I just have one, Mr. Mayor. The announcement is about Imagine a Day Without Water Poster Contest winners. The city of Charlottesville and the Albemarle County Service Authority and Rybana Water and Sewer Authority are participating in Imagine a Day Without Water, a national campaign to educate and inspire people about the essential value and importance of water in our everyday lives. As part of the campaign, we hosted our second annual art contest, where students from the city and the county were asked to creatively convey a day without water in a poster. The contest was a great success, with over four hundred and forty-five poster entries and with a representation from all Charlottesville City Schools, grade one through eight. There are four winners from each grade category and a fan favorite, which was voted on by the community with over five hundred and thirty votes casted. The winners for the 2016 Imagine a Day Without Water Art Contest are: First and Second Grade, Sarah Nee from the Baker Butler Elementary School, Grade Two; Third to Fourth Grade Category, Jingi Lee from Hollymead Elementary, Grade Four; Fifth to Sixth Grade, Olivia Kim, Hollymead Elementary, Grade Five; Seventh and Eighth Grade, Marco Lopez, Buford Middle School, Grade Eight; and the fan favorite was Shilu Derberry, Brownsville Elementary, Grade Four. Student artwork will be displayed around Charlottesville, including the Charlottesville's Public Works Administration Building, the ACSA Building, and the Rybana Water and Sewer Authority Building. You can go to www.shawsville.org/waterconservation, all one word, to view the winners and find out more information on the campaign. They are really beautiful, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do this when we do the...
Upcoming council meetings. Council will hold a pre-budget work session on Thursday, December 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at City Space. This is very important because we're gonna build the budget, and that's your tax money. So, please, we're gonna have a number of these. Please show up at these meetings. City office holiday closings, and you're not gonna remember anything of what I say now, but it's gonna be on the city website. Charlottesville city offices will close Monday, December 26th for the holidays, and Monday, January 2nd for New Year's Day. Trash and recycling services will resume normally on the Monday after each of the holidays. Charlottesville Transportation Cat Service, Saturday, December 24th, 2016, Christmas Eve. Full service ends early, 6:00 p.m. Sunday, December 25th, Christmas, no service. Sunday, January 1st, 2017, New Year's Day, Sunday-level service, only the free trolley, Route 2 and Route 12, but this will be on the city website.
I have one quick announcement. Just wanted to let everybody know that on Saturday, December 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at First Baptist Church on 632 West Main Street, Hype and First Baptist Church will collaborate once again for the fifth annual Coat Drive, the big giveaway. So, we will have coats of all sizes for adults and children, shoes and scarves for all of those who are in need. Please note, this is on a first-come, first-served basis, and if anyone has a coat that they would like to donate for those who are in need...again, if you have a coat, if you have shoes, you have scarves, any article of clothing that can keep someone warm, please drop off your items at Virginia Organizing at 703 Concord Avenue, Crow Rec Center, which is at 1700 Rose Hill Drive, JJ's Barbershop, which is at 1924 Arlington Boulevard, or His Image Barbershop, which is at 2116 Burke Mar Drive. If you have any other questions, please feel free to contact myself or Pastor Hadari Hamilton. Thank you.
Okay. There's a couple of statements that I'm gonna read, and then Mr. Bellamy is asked for some time for a statement for a while, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the meeting. Okay. There's one announcement and three other short statements. First is that I'll be holding my monthly mayor office hours, open office hours, this Thursday, from 12:00 to 1:00 o'clock. I'm here at City Hall. Anybody who's interested in coming can either just show up or contact Paige Rice ahead of time for a slot at 970-3113 or at ricep@charlottesville.org. Second thing is, this is about mutual respect. I wanna start off tonight's meeting with a request for civility tonight. Our consent agenda tonight includes a statement of principles, which Ms. Sekus will read in more depth, that explains our commitment as a body to pluralism, inclusion, equity, and justice. These are not just words to us, they are values. Our discussions should be civil and respectful, not destructive and intolerant. In a time when political rhetoric has become so heated and divisive, it's more important than ever that we're able to engage with opposing views without spiraling into ad hominem attacks. Please take a moment to look around you. Everyone you see is a human being, with his or her private struggles, opinions, and aspirations. We are all, or at least most of us, members of the same Charlottesville-area community. We all have a stake in this city and a right to feel safe and to feel heard. Even about the most difficult matters, we should be able, at the very least, to disagree without being disagreeable. And so, I'm asking everyone tonight to proceed in the spirit of civic and civil dialogue. Two other items. I don't wanna preempt Mr. Bellamy, but because they are in the nature of overarching comments. Number two is, and then I'll say one other thing on governing procedures. This is fairly unusual, but this is a little bit of an unusual meeting. So, I'll ask my colleagues indulgence in saying a couple of overall comments. Let me begin by saying that I consider Mr. Bellamy both a friend and a colleague. Like many in our community, I was shaken by the revelations of his past Internet speech. Mr. Bellamy has repeatedly stated that he regrets his words and rejects such language and thinking. I believe in second chances and our capacity to change and to improve, and I am willing personally to take him at his word and put this in our past. While I reject the content of these communications, I also reject the hatred and outright racism of many of the attacks that we have received against Mr. Bellamy. Such sentiments, while protected by the First Amendment, are injurious to our community, and I'm using my own First Amendment rights now to confront and condemn them. Finally, we have received requests for city council to remove Mr. Bellamy from office. Before this evening gets going, I must clarify for the entire community that we have no such legal authority. City code expressly limits the application of such actions to counselors found to conduct, quote, "malfeasance or misfeasance in office." Put simply, this is not a power of council. Any decisions, anything going forward is really between Mr. Bellamy and his constituents. We have done a lot of good work on this council. We've got a busy year ahead, and we need to keep working hard to serve the people of Charlottesville. And number...number three. Number three, this is an unrelated matter to this, but I want to address it because it will be coming up on governing procedures. Tonight, we're gonna hear from several speakers during our Matters by the Public session regarding the new Matters by the Public procedures, which were adopted earlier in the year and then were reaffirmed after six months, and with a change, which I'll speak about. I know that we are all in this body passionately committed, both to public engagement and to the freedom of speech. We also want to get the business of the public done. The goal of the new procedures was to make our meetings as effective, engaging, and as efficient as possible. For instance, we moved work sessions previously held off-camera on Thursday nights into the second meeting of each month on-camera so people could watch us deliberate. We introduced time limits on agenda items so things didn't run on forever. We put meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, which you will see tonight, so that we debate on motions rather than just talk kind of on and on. We also changed our first Matters by the Public. For over a decade, city council has had twelve spots for public comment before the meeting, and unlimited public comment after the meeting. We wanted to make sure that the slots weren't monopolized by just a few folks who could routinely attend meetings and come early to sign up, in the first-come, first-served system. Instead, we wanted folks to be able to reserve slots early by stopping by, making a phone call, or sending an email. A couple of months ago, we added back three in-person signups to further change the system. While I often hear from folks who believe the system works well, others do not, and we'll hear from them tonight about this, and I expect other provisions as well. I want to emphasize, however, one thing. We will be hearing tonight from our critics, and that is how it should be and how we want it. Tonight will also show, for better or worse, how the new system is designed to work. Nineteen people wanted to sign up in advance. We have had twelve spots for a long, long, long time. Under our new system, we randomly selected tonight nine of those nineteen. Three signed up later, which I have right here, first-come, first-served. Is this better or worse than if all nineteen had showed up first-come, first-served, and seven of them couldn't have spoken? I don't know. This is the conversation we're having right now. The underlying issue of this whole issue really depends on whether we have limited or unlimited slots. I expect we are here, folks, saying we should go back to the old system, but the old system limited public comment to twelve people. It did so by cutting off anyone who wasn't in line in time. And why is that fair? As I've said, I can see good arguments for doing away with the slots entirely. One option would be to mirror Albemarle County and have unlimited spots for both preregistration and those who show up at the meeting. The major question, then, is how to manage the meeting itself. Tonight, for instance, if twenty, say, you know, we had nineteen, but say, around that number had signed up, and if they spoke for three minutes each, we wouldn't begin...we usually have about half an hour of business before we get started. You all will...a lot of folks here aren't...here who don't come to a meeting ordinarily. Hopefully, you'll be interested in everything we talk about. We wouldn't begin working on our agenda items until 8:30. That impacts community members, staff who plan on being present in the meeting, work, you know, presenting to us, but will be inconvenienced by staying until late hours, especially folks with families, especially anyone who depends on public transportation. One option might be to have completely unlimited signup. Anybody who signs up ahead of time, anybody who comes can speak, not have twelve spots. But in that case, we really do run into a challenge of starting public business by a late hour. So, this is why every public body grapples with the question about how do you make the right choice, and there really is no perfect answer. So, we're trying to get it right. One option might be to go from three minutes to two minutes if there's more than a given number of signups, say fifteen. Say fifteen, we know that some folks wouldn't like it, but it might be a better way of managing the amount of time before the meeting really gets going into the agenda items. So, we'll be talking about this. Again, no perfect system. We're trying to get it right. We care a great deal about hearing from the public. I'm eager to work with my colleagues on these and other issues in the new year, around the six-month anniversary of the last time we decided on this. So, I wanted to say that before we got started. With that said, Mr. Bellamy?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There we go. There we go. So, I want...thank you. So, I want to be very clear. I owe this city and this area everything, including an apology. I'm sorry for the tweets that I sent...
Let's not have any...no, I'm gonna interrupt here. Anybody who interrupts from the floor and does not allow others to proceed will...this is against our rules. You need to speak with the recognition of the chair of the meeting. This is common Robert's Rules of Order. It's in our procedures, so do not interrupt at all.
So, that said, we'll start from the top. So, I wanna be very clear. I owe this city and this area everything, including an apology. I'm sorry for the tweets that I sent in my early-to-mid twenties that were made public last week. I'm not looking to defend or justify my words, as they are indefensible, and at thirty, they do not reflect the man that I am or the things that I believe today. I hope that you will judge me for my actions today and not the words I wrote while still growing as a man. For the past week, my past mistakes have generated negative news stories and press outlets across the state, and I'm sorry that my words caused such pain to so many. They are no longer what I believe, and I would give anything to take them back, but I can't. I can only continue to demonstrate through my actions and my words today that I am a changed man. I've grown and learned a lot since I've been moving and living here in Charlottesville. The elders in this community, the people in this city, you've basically helped raise me. Charlottesville helped me grow from an arrogant young man who had too little respect for women to the married man and father of three daughters who has the utmost respect for all women. This city helped me grow from an angry young man with limited experiences with others outside of my comfort zone to the leader who's willing to stand up and fight for the rights and civil liberties of my brothers and sisters from the LGBTQ community and anyone whose rights are in jeopardy. And it is this city, the city of Charlottesville, who supported the Coat Drives, the Turkey Giveaways, the community cookouts, the vigils, the rallies, the seminars, the town halls, and every other effort I've made over the past four years to bring this community together. The proudest moment of my life, marrying my wife, Ashley, took place here in this city, not elsewhere, and it is this city that I hold so dear that I also realize that unfortunately I may have let down. My evolution as a man didn't start or stop in my twenties, and I promise that the strength, the courage, the determination to be a better leader that you have taught me will also continue. I vow, I promise, to continue to grow every day and continue to be the man that you want me to be. I vow, I promise, to continue to be the leader and grow into the man that you need me to be. I will work with you all to make this city a better place. I've truly learned the importance of humility and grace, and I'm thanking God for growth. I appreciate you all. I love you all, supporters and detractors alike, and I thank you for your support. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Well, we're gonna proceed now. There's...we'll be hearing from some folks. We're gonna proceed now to...what we do in our meetings is we...now in the meeting, we go to the city manager's response to Matters by the Public that were raised in the last meeting.
Yeah, Mike, I have a few...
Oh, Mr. Fennel. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
First, a personal note. I'm a Christian, and yesterday, in these days before Christmas, I and thousands of citizens... citizens heard messages of forgiveness and rebirth, a message that all religions share. I’m confident that my community will take this message to heart as we work our way through this. So what started this is a young black man who had the nerve to stand up in public and advocate for redress of a grievance. If some of those words sound familiar, it is because it is a constitutional right. A group with an opposing opinion also aired their grievance as they have every right to do. But they also have a dark and twisted political agenda and would run Wes out of town if they could. I will not let that happen.
I object to that kind of advocacy, and I want to make it very clear that I will not support any punitive action against Wes. It seems that some people who Wes considered a friend and ally now can’t be found. For whatever reason, they don’t have the stomach to stand with him when the going gets rough and a virtual mob comes for him. But I will stand with him. I’ve seen his work with children, and I’ve seen his work with adults. I’ve seen his energy and determination in confronting endemic racism. And if anybody thinks this is not about racism, I would remind them of a few years ago when a DNA test proved beyond a reasonable doubt that Thomas Jefferson had a relationship with Sally Hemings. Then, as now, the town exploded. So my bottom line is, I’ve seen him perform his duty to represent the citizens of Charlottesville, and I will not abandon a public servant.
I actually did not come with a statement to make. I’ve made my statement in the public of support for Wes, but I’ll basically just say, “Like he said.”
Mayor Signer, I would like, for those that haven’t read the newspaper or whatever you, whatever outlet you have for news, I, and I made this statement. Yes, those past tweets were troubling, but that was in the past. What has happened, in my experience, does not match those tweets. The experience I have with the man that I’ve worked with on this council dais as an elected official simply does not match those tweets. And as a human being, I take people as I see them, I take people as they treat me, and I have had nothing but a feeling of mutual respect as a colleague working with Mr. Bellamy, Vice Mayor Bellamy. So on that score, when you’ve got a colleague that has only treated you with respect and has, I’ve seen, worked very hard on council, there’s only one thing to do, is to continue working together, and that’s what matters now, working together for the common good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jones, City Manager, response to Matters by the Public.
Want to follow up, Mr. Mayor? Just a couple of, a couple of responses from the last City Council meeting. Mr. Philip Jones mentioned that the city should consider honoring two people who broke important color barriers in the city government’s employment history. Carol Carter, who was the first African-American to serve in the city’s fire department, and James Jones, the first African-American to serve in the city’s police department. Thanks to the quick and impressive research skills of Ms. Jane Smith, we have been able to, to confirm that Mr. Jones was the first African-American to serve in the fire department. We are still working to independently verify that Carol Carter was the city’s first African-American to be hired as a police officer with the Charlottesville Police Department. We hope to be able to verify that soon and to recognize both of them and their families at a City Council meeting early in the new year. Ms. Nancy Carpenter raised concerns over homeless children in the city schools. She mentioned that a higher-than-usual number of children were homeless. That number seemed to be very high to us as well. As we were following up on her concerns, Ms. Carpenter emailed the city to retract the claims she had presented. There was simply a misunderstanding about that number, and it turned out not to be nearly as high as she had thought. We’re all relieved to know that, but we are still committed to working to reduce the number of children without consistent, reliable shelter in our community down to zero. And we thank Ms. Carpenter for following up with us on that. So those were the two items.
Okay, thanks. Let’s move on now to aboyments to boards and commissions. Mr. Fenwick usually takes this.
Citizens Police Advisory Panel, I move these following, following recommendations. Citizens Police Advisory Panel, Mary Eamster. The Housing Advisory Committee, Philip Doranzio and Ridge Skyler. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Ruth Barnett and Ann Hemonway. Personnel Appeals Board, Joseph Sable. And the Tree Commission, Roseanne Simon.
Second motion.
Second. Any discussion, questions, all in favor? All right, carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to matters by the public, I’m going to read our standard guideline. I’m also going to read a couple of the guidelines from our council meeting procedures. We welcome public comments, an important part of our meeting. Time is reserved near the beginning and at the end of each regular City Council meeting for matters by the public. Please follow these guidelines. If you’re here to speak for a public hearing, and we do have one tonight on the Ragged Mountain Natural Area Rules of Use, we already have, like, a number of folks signed up there. Please sign up there. We also have a couple of folks signed up for the 2016 year-end appropriation, and both of those sheets are down there. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and address before beginning your remarks. I’m going to read right now the, the other guidelines that are, again, this is on our website under City Council Meeting Procedures. Improper comments and disorderly conduct are not permitted. Persons appearing before the council will not be allowed to: A) campaign for public office; B) promote private business ventures; C) use profanity or vulgar language or gestures; D) threaten violence toward council, city staff, or members of the public; E) engage in behavior that intimidates others; and F) interrupt other speakers or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting. Because we’re in active litigation about item 9G, we will not be enforcing that item And then the last thing is, on item 10, any speaker violates these rules will be called to order by the mayor. If their marks or conduct persists, the mayor shall order the speaker to cease speaking and be seated. If the order is not heeded, the mayor shall direct the sergeant-at-arms to escort the individual from the meeting room. All right, we have 12 folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We talked before, I would just like to offer a strategy. It’s certainly not an order by any means. I know that a lot of people are here with very strong opinions in very different positions, and people are going to speak that you really disagree with, and I implore you not to shout out, not to go, “Oh,” just, just hold it. And I would ask that when someone speaks that you do agree with, raise your hand if you want to show your support, okay? And that way, you can express yourself without shouting out, because otherwise, it’ll be chaos, and there’ll be fights, and there’ll be no fun at all for anybody, okay? Please, so we can hear everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Signer. All right, first, first up is Wal, Walter Heinecke.
Good evening, members of council, City Manager. My name is Walt Heinecke. I live at 1521 Amherst Street in the city, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the council’s procedures. A couple of things. This is what I love about Charlottesville right here, this level of democracy and public input. This is the thing that we want to preserve and we want to encourage in our, in our communities. This is a really good sign of health in our community. Secondly, I also want to preface my comments by, just by saying that we live in a crowded theater in these days. We all live in a crowded theater, and that means that free speech doesn’t mean that you can say whatever you want, whenever you want, without it being seemingly screaming fire in a crowded theater. So comments that elicit sort of racist intolerance and those kinds of things that lead, incite violence and incite civil disobedience, these kinds of things, we really have to be careful about when we think about free speech and public comment. That being said, I wanted to speak to you about the council resolutions that were passed in February. In February of 2016, the newly-elected council passed, without real public input and transparency, two resolutions significantly changing council procedure regarding public inputs, counselor input, and I think free speech. Specifically, some of those issues were allotting maximum of 20 minutes to presentation and discussion of most agenda items, limiting most counselor comments to three minutes, the same limit as comments made by the public, establishing new guidelines for counselor inquiries to city staff in order to improve operational efficiencies, changing public comment by randomizing the signup process, giving the mayor control of the council chamber and allowing the mayor to turn off public, the public access audio and visual equipment, and requiring public comments to be addressed to the council. Other issues that came up in that resolution that were problematic for a lot of citizens were requiring two counselors to remove something from the consent agenda rather than one, and not allowing counselors to directly address the, the citizens of Charlottesville. Many, many citizens of Charlottesville agree with the Rutherford Institute that has stated, “We are particularly troubled to see the Charlotteville City Council marching lockstep with those who would stifle the ardor of citizens, arbitrarily silence critics, and impede efforts to assure transparency in government.” In this respect, meeting procedures recently adopted by the Charlottesville City Council violate the letter and spirit of these constitutional rights by imposing obstacles to transparency and citizen engagement. If the city is serious about being a leader in the fight for open government, it must rescind these new rules and replace them with ones that demonstrate a commitment to public participation in a democratic process. I was happy to see the mayor discuss some of those issues at the beginning of the meeting. I only wish we would have had a more publicly transparent public process when we started this whole issue. So, in that spirit, I’ve handed the city clerk a petition by signed over 1,000 citizens of Charlottesville asking that you rescind those rules immediately. Thank you.
William, William Jones?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Jones. I am not from the city of Charlottesville, like Wes Bellamy is not, but I’ve been planning here since 2006 and have been, I consider myself to be an active member in the city concerning the black community and mainly the black community, and those who aren’t hurt. But what I have to say today is, and it may not even need to be said because y’all can’t remove Wes from this, but I think that it’s still good to speak on his behalf. When I, when I met Wes Bellamy, as was some unsure, I was unsure of if I would be able to rock with him. I thought he was a down-south, privileged college boy attempting to infiltrate the hood as a way to get some political footing as he charted his way toward higher goals. I was told that he was always in stuff, trying to be seen, trying to attach his name to things, et cetera, et cetera. That impression I found out later was wrong. It started going out to Mel’s Cafe after Trayvon Martin rally. He didn’t say much. He was surrounded by a bunch of people that knew him and didn’t really know each other, but he kind of stayed back, didn’t really say a whole lot to keep the conversation going, just allowed people to meet each other, and he kind of played the background. But then something came up about a website called WorldStar Hip Hop that is really influential in the black community, and he spoke with this sort of disdain, really passionate about not rocking with this dude, because he kind of strategically puts out things at a certain time that, in Wes’s opinion, was devastating to the black community. And so to hear him speak to someone like that and, and speak concerning someone like that the way that he did, kind of made me take a step back, because usually people would want to rally behind someone like that who is influential instead of charging them and, and saying that you’re wrong. So that kind of caused me to take a second look at Wes. So that impression that left on, the impression that that left on me was to give Wes a chance, rather give myself a chance to actually see what all there is to this young man who has desires to help bring change to this community. You don’t readily hear young people upset with something like WorldStar, especially when they know the people or know someone that knows them, but he was and wanted to challenge them in a real way. I’m a 34-year-old man who has lost a lot of friends, relatives, and associates over the course of my life to the streets. I believe the historical establishment of white supremacy in housing, education, and generational wealth building has helped to create a tangible web, atmosphere that has hugely helped to make this sort of thing possible. I’ve had friends who have literally had their faces, okay, skip past that. I just, can I just say this one thing real quick?
We’ve got to wrap up.
Okay. I think Wes is an asset to everyone, but what our desire is to have him be seen as a fair asset to the black community. And so with that being said, for him to be attacked in a way is disheartening to many of the black community, and it would be nice for him to have a second chance and mercy granted to him by those who are opposing him. Thank you, Mayor.
Nakia Walker?
Good evening, Nakia Walker, 503 Dreward Avenue. I want to share two readings. The first is from Ta-Nehisi Coates, Between the World and Me. Black beauty was never celebrated in movies, in television, or in the textbooks I had seen as a child. Every one of any import, from Jesus to George Washington, was white. This is why your grandparents banned Tarzan and the Lone Ranger and Toys with White Faces from the house. They were rebelling against the history books that spoke of black people only as sentimental first. First black five-star general, first black congressman, first black mayor, always presented in the bemused manner of a category of trivial pursuit. Serious history was West, and the West was white. This was distilled in me in a quote I once read from novelist Saul Bellow. I can’t remember where I read it or when, only that I know, who is Toy, who is the Toy Story of the Zulus? The second piece is by Nikki Giovanni. She says, “Every time I see the statue of Lincoln sitting below the Emancipation Proclamation, I want to have a statue of Frederick Douglass standing behind him guiding his hand. I could see that. Lincoln was an interesting man, an interesting white man who did the right thing finally by freeing the slaves in states where he had no power to enforce his decree. But hey, why be so picky? He did it true, but not for me. But I know that I do not owe people any great affection or loyalty. They do not love me. That, by way, means I live in a narrow world, or maybe not so narrow. Maybe a more accurate way of looking at this is that I will not have my world nor my worth determined by people who mean me ill. Unlike the boys and the latter-day, and his latter-day children, I do not measure my soul by the tape of the white world.” When you’re talking about Wes’s comments, the comments he made, he is a man who grew up in the South, who has suffered from the legacy of slavery. And for people, including you, Mike Signer, to call his comments troubling, like you were never a man and never 23 and never insulted anybody, is very concerning. We live in a community where we hide behind the pretense. You all want Wes to come out here and apologize. Wes doesn’t owe any of us an apology for tweets that a young man wrote when he was 23. You all want him to come forward and keep begging for forgiveness. He does not have to beg for forgiveness. I have repeatedly said to Wes, “You owe nobody an apology.” I hope he apologized to Miss Wine Fine or Fine Wine in 2009, okay? But that was her, and that was whatever was going on with them. We do not know the context of any of those tweets in 140 characters. We don’t. And to allow somebody like And to allow somebody like Jason Kessler to influence how you all responded to Wes, you all should be ashamed, not just the alt-right, but the progressive liberals in this town who hide behind pretense.
Thank you. Jeffrey Fogle?
Given the context of tonight's situation, I want to make it clear, lest anybody think otherwise, that I accept what Wes has said, and I respect him and hope to work with him in the future. But what I really wanted to talk to was the council in general and to suggest...
Who are you?
Excuse me?
Who are you?
Pardon me?
Who are you?
You don't know?
Some people might not.
Is there anybody who would like to...
I don't want this to take out of his time.
That's not... My name is Jeffrey Fogle.
Thank you.
And I just violated the rules of the city council by speaking to you at the request of one of the city counselors, and I hope that time will not be taken from my remarks. What I wanted to say to the council was a suggestion that you all learn three simple words, and those words are, "I was wrong," or if you prefer, "we were wrong." Take, for example, the introductory comments of the mayor when he said, "Section 9G of the rules will not be enforced tonight due to pending litigation." Well, the fact is, Section 9G was ruled unconstitutional as a violation of free speech. We never heard that from the council. Nobody on the council has acknowledged that they had violated free speech. In fact, what we heard from the mayor was, in defense of the procedures, he is a constitutional scholar who believes in free speech, and yet we have a federal court ruling suggesting neither of those things are true. Let's start admitting the truth. We had the same problem when I represented panhandlers, and a federal court found that a council, and most of you weren't on that council, had violated the First Amendment and had lied about it. Nobody on the council is will, was, or is willing to admit that. We hear that it's not proper for counselors to respond to the comments of speakers. I have spoken, I think, at the last four meetings. Mr. Jones has never responded to any of my comments. Why is that, Mr. Jones? No, you're not allowed to speak. That's a rhetorical question.
You just asked, "Oh, rhetorical."
That's a rhetorical question. Because this council likes to act in lockstep with one another. You don't understand how foolish you look by acting and walking and speaking and doing everything else that you can in lockstep and never speaking back to the public about policy. You want Mr. Jones to speak about matters of the public, but you don't want to speak. You are afraid that one of you might spontaneously utter the truth. That's what you're afraid of, and it's about time that that stopped. And we're talking now about procedures. When you talk, Ms. Galvin, about respect, when you talk, Ms. Zakos, about respect, when you talk about respect, Mr. Fenwick, when you talk about respect, Mr. Signer, you don't understand how disrespectful you are, how disrespectful you are to the speakers who you don't listen to, who you don't respond to, how disrespectful you are to the community, and you talk about the meager efforts you're making to solve the problems of poverty, of low-income housing, of housing for the working class, and you will not even consider a reasonable proposal that's been put forth? In fact, Ms. Galvin, you wouldn't even respond to my email. Bear Signer, you wouldn't respond to my discussion with you.
Thank you.
None of you will do that. And so, let's start talking about respect, and let's start talking about the truth.
Thank you. David Carron?
Hi, my name is David Carron. I wanted to bring up a matter here. Winter is coming up, and last year, the plan regarding inclement weather fell short on many levels, in my opinion, and in talking with other business owners in my area, they agree. I think we need to start examining some different options on efficiency regarding clearing the roads. One thing I think would be effective is to enforce a ban on all on-street parking prior to, you know, winter event. In conjunction, there needs to be free parking available downtown, which I believe there already is, but also free transportation back to your house, you know, potentially through the buses, something to that effect. This has been the standard in many northern cities of similar size, and, you know, we need to have that happen here now that, you know, we're getting snowfalls that are similar to the amounts that they typically get. I wanted to stick to some other issues like this one and wish that there were these types of things that were the primary topic tonight among speakers, but unfortunately, there is the matter of the tweets by Wes Bellamy. I encouraged folks to go vote for Wes initially and was happy to see an African-American on the council for the first time. I even attended his first meeting in office as I wanted to be a part of the history. But with the power comes the responsibility. As time has gone on, I have lost faith in his ability to represent all of the citizens of Charlottesville. When Douglas Muir responded to a post on Facebook that Mr. Bellamy disagreed with, he organized a boycott in conjunction with NAACP of Mr. Muir's business. Representing the city council, I do not believe it is appropriate for a counselor to take part in a protest of a taxpaying citizen and their business. Mr. Bellamy has blurred the line many times since being elected between professional and personal, and these racially charged misogynistic tweets were the last straw for me. I think he needs to step down from the council, and I really in question the integrity of the whole council, save for Mayor Signer, at their unwillingness to condemn the rhetoric.
John Hayden?
John Hayden, Westwood Road. Wes, I implored you to be a counselor for all the citizens, and you ignored me. I think so far, my criticism of all of you has been tepid, going only so far as to call you liberal socialist. However, that's about to change. For those of you who support Wes, you are publicly giving tacit agreement to the vile, racist, homophobic, sexist comments that he posted for all the world to see. In supporting him, you condone him disparaging gay people. In supporting him, you condone the pro-rape messages he put out about white women and the vile messages about various sex acts. In supporting him, you condone his anti-white racist remarks. How can anyone who states publicly that he hates white people be allowed to remain in a position of authority? Quote, "I don't like white people, so I hate snow." Quote, "I hate black people who act white." Quote, "White women equal the devil." And my favorite quote, "I really tune out when white people talk in community meetings. I really need to work on that." Obama shrugged.
Please.
Are you paying attention now, Wes? This anti-white rhetoric is at the center of this call for the removal of the statues and this bigoted effort calling for a boycott of a taxpayer's business, and you people condoned it by not answering my questions about its legality. Others have talked about redemption when it comes to Wes, but he had no thoughts of redemption when it came to calling for Doug Muir's firing at UVA or the organized picket and called for a boycott of the man's business just because he was offended. He has told us in his own words his disdain of women, gays, and white people. By keeping him on council, you are publicly agreeing with his comments. On a number of occasions, he has shown disrespect to me here, but up till now, I thought it was just because we disagreed on issues. I realize now it's because of the color of my skin.
All right, everybody, let him finish, please.
This story has gone viral to national media, casting a dark shadow on the city. It's only going to get worse. He was not willing to accept Mr. Muir's apology for two or three sentences.
All right, no interruptions. No interruptions, please. I will, and we're not...
Put him out because you wanted to get me out for a...
I've given a warning, sir. That's what I'm entitled to under the rules, so that's a warning. No interruptions from anybody of any speaker. We'll stop the meeting if we can't proceed civilly. Sir, how about another thirty seconds to finish your point?
I'm going to go until I'm done.
No, you're not.
This is three minutes. This is three minutes, and I keep getting interrupted.
You're not going to go until... I said you have another thirty seconds.
He wrote and set out to destroy this man's business and life. Someone here has tried to ruin my life because of my opinions. I think I know who it is. He is unfit to maintain, to remain on city council and needs to be removed immediately. Would you support him if he was a white man and disparaged black people?
Thank you. All right, Richard Aguilar. Richard Aguilar? Going once, going twice. Richard Aguilar, back in the back room? What? Oh, okay. They're going to check back. In the meantime, we'll... Okay, Jason Kessler? This is not... Turn it off, please.
Start the time.
You're going on your time. Are you good? Okay, can you turn that off, please? Turn it off, please.
My name is Jason Kessler, and I am here on behalf of over nine hundred petitioners to demand that Wes Bellamy be removed from his office as a counselor for the city of Charlottesville. The homophobic, anti-woman, anti-white, and pro-rape statements which he assigned to the official Twitter account of the vice mayor have disqualified him from position on council. When you Google the name Wes Bellamy, it is now synonymous with vile and derogatory hate, unacceptable for an adversary of our city. Frankly, the lies and misinformation coming from both Bellamy and Zakos are unbecoming of the office. It was, it has been well documented how Zakos at first issued a statement about Bellamy being hacked, then deleted and issued a second statement claiming that the information I had provided was false. When the veracity of my article was proven by Cav Daily, Daily Progress, and the Washington Post, among other news outlets, Ms. Zakos finally fell silent, silent on "It ain't rape if she moans," silent on "A gay slur," silent on "White women smell like assault charges in deli meat," and many other outrageously racist and offensive statements. In fact, Ms. Zakos and the other counselors have betrayed their every liberal progressive value to secure the incestuous relationship between Ms. Zakos and her disgraced protege. Mr. Bellamy and his allies continue to assert the easily falsifiable lie that the statements were made in his early twenties. I know the vice mayor is not a math teacher, but he used to be on the Board of Education. So, let's see if he can follow some simple arithmetic. He was, he is now thirty years old. All of the tweets were made in the last six years, the most recent coming in 2014. That means all of the tweets were made between the ages of twenty-four and twenty-eight, not early twenties, by even the most charitable standards, despite what you tell the Washington Post. Even one of Bellamy's tweets would have forced his resignation a week ago if he were a white man. Consider this tweet which Bellamy wrote just a few years ago while employed as a teacher in Albemarle County School System. LOL, the funniest thing about being down south is seeing the look on the faces of little white men when they have to look up to a black man. Imagine if the reverse had been true. A white man moves to a majority-black city like Detroit, is employed by the school system and writes, "My favorite thing about being in the ghetto is seeing the look on the faces of little black men when they have to look up to a white man." Wes Bellamy is a black supremacist and a rape fetishist, and, among other things, Wes Bellamy, he's again a black man.
Finish. Let him finish. Let him finish. You're finished. Okay. All right, everyone. Okay, now we're on to John. John, sir, sir, your time is over. Your time is over. All right, we're, did we find Richard Aguilar? Okay, John Faltz.
And I would like to report something that I just heard.
Okay, if you could hold on one second.
I just wanted to alert our police officers that the previous speaker just looked at Mr. Bellamy and said, "Your days are numbered," so just want to put that on the mic.
All right. Okay, I would like for everyone, all right, everyone quiet. Okay, I'm restoring order. We'll put it, we'll put a halt to the meeting if we need to so we can have order and proceed with our business. We have some business to go on tonight. Okay, Mr. Faltz? Mr. Faltz?
I'm John.
Okay, we're actually proceeding on. We have a dual, we have a speaker who's ready to go now. We have another three speakers, I think, after this, so Mr. Faltz.
I'm John Faltz, 1501 Rugby Road.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
The issue of matters from the public is a very important one for me, and it's been in the paper with a recommendation that it be changed. As you know, I appear before you from time to time trying to impart a bit of wisdom into your decision-making, usually with no success. But you know, the rules that you've got now are pretty damn good. Anybody who can't make their point in three minutes, well, maybe with the exception of me, should be cut off. You've seen this here, people wanting to talk more, wanting to talk more. Cutting them off is important. The randomizing is also a good thing. Usually, there's plenty of slots. Usually, nobody signs up. But I have been here in the old system when people would pack the audience and you didn't get to talk unless you were one of the pack. I think the randomizing works well. This whole issue of matters from the public is a tempest in a teapot, and you should just ignore it. You've got far more important things to do. You've got issues of race which are being brought up. You've got the Belmont Bridge. You've got West Main Street. You've got the parking garage. Please spend your time on important things and not this silly one. Thank you.
All right. So, just for those keeping score on matters of the public, we just went through the nine that were chosen through the random selection process of the people who signed up, the nineteen ahead of time, then there were three who signed up in person under the old first-come-first-served system, and among those, we have Suzanne Smith speaking.
Hi, good evening, and I just want to say thank you very much for the job you guys do for our city. My name is Suzanne Smith, and I'm at 171 Whitewood Road, Apartment 1, Charlottesville, Virginia, and I'm also a member of Congregation Beth Israel right here in Charlottesville. I'm with Impact, and I've seen a couple of you guys at the events here and there. It is an organization made up of twenty-seven different faith congregations that unite in the cause of justice to address serious problems in our community. I'm also part of the recovery community. Been sober eleven years, and I just want to say thank you so much for your support. I landed here in Charlottesville, and thank you so much. I had an, I have an opportunity to guide people in recovery, and for two years, I helped a young lady in the recovery process, really extraordinarily woman, a mother, but she lived with an abusive husband who was also addicted to alcohol and drugs, and she also had a very young son and was pretty much torn between her and the husband. She ended up having to seek help from the She Shelter here in Charlottesville to fled for safety, and then out of that, they moved back to one bedroom apartment where she returned back to alcohol and drugs. Her sister and I managed to get her into a program that serves people with addiction, Region 10. However, it was not enough. He was outpatient. Then we tried to get her help at UVA. We literally had to argue with the UVA psychiatrist, the emergency room, to get her admitted to UVA Medical Center psychiatric floor. Best program after that was a short-term program in Richmond, which is about like seventy miles away, where she was far away from her family and friends and supports. Upon discharge, however, from the Richmond program, we did arrange, you know, travel back to Charlottesville. However, the staff allowed her to leave with another patient, promising to drive her directly home. However, that did not happen. She hooked up with other friends of the patient, that night consumed narcotics plus alcohol. That night consumed narcotics plus alcohol. The next morning, after police noted a patient at her home, I was awoken by her screaming sister's telephone call that she had overdosed and died. Night I will never forget. But this is what can happen when we, when we don't have the treatment here, especially for women, especially for women and kids, a long-term, comprehensive treatment. Two years ago, Impact took on the problem of crime and drugs and found out that three thousand people who go through a regional jail are addicted to substances and that there is really no local residential treatment options for women. So, we pushed Region Ten to make a plan for a women's treatment facility since that operating, the men's center, the Moore Center here in town. Now, Region Ten plans to open a women's facility by next fall. It will have eight beds with hopes to serve fifty women per year. Each woman can also bring up to two squishy children.
Thank you.
And we do ask real quickly, we are here tonight to let you know that we expect to see a line item for seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget next year, which would be operating cost. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joe Starcia?
Good evening, my name's Joe Starcia and I live at one eighteen Blinko Lane. I'm here tonight to both stand in solidarity with Counselor Bellamy and also to stand in opposition to the forces of white nationalism in our community. I've gotten to know Wes in my work advocating for racial justice in our community. He's not perfect, but as my wise friend and movement mentor, Lindsay, tells me, "Everyone comes to the movement broken, the system breaks us all, and the work is the elixir." Wes has been an active enthusiastic part of that work, and it is for that reason that he has been targeted by recent attacks. I want to commend all the counselors for their strong statements in support of Mr. Bellamy. For some others, there seems to be some confusion with regard to what this supposed controversy is really about. Since it is said that sunshine is the best disinfectant, let me shine some light on the situation. Jason Kessler, the man who posted the original hit piece on Mr. Bellamy, is a blogger who associates himself with the so-called alt-right. Mr. Kessler claims that he is in favor of equality, yet has tweeted in the past that the Broadway hit Hamilton is, quote, "A white-faced minstrel show." Has tweeted that if people keep calling the alt-right Nazis, they will use it as a term of endearment. And has retweeted such equality-promoting thoughts as that, quote, "White privilege is a hoax, used to garner support to institutionalize discrimination against white people," end quote, "And quote, 'Mothers should raise their children, not create PowerPoint presentations for globalist corporation,'" end quote. This is the man who's attacking Mr. Bellamy. So what's really going on here? What are we really talking about? The reality is that the alt-right are targeting Wes and other leaders of color because of their efforts to promote racial justice in the community. They hope that by digging up some old tweets, pushing them out under the guise of concern about racism and misogyny, that they can weaken Wes, and they can use that weakness to push their white supremacist agenda. Well, I say this to the progressive citizens of Charlottesville. We will not drink the poison. We will not be manipulated, and we will not be cowed. We stand in solidarity with Mr. Bellamy. We will never allow the alt-right to target people of color in Charlottesville. We stand in solidarity against white nationalism, and we will continue to fight for inclusiveness, equality, and justice in our community. Thank you.
Tanisha, Tanisha Hudson?
Good evening.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, only, we have a, we have a recognized speaker here.
Did she even front up to me?
We're just, we're just letting you pursue.
Wrong person. One, good evening, everyone, I'm Tanisha Hudson. I wanna start off by saying, we just said the Pledge of Allegiance, which ends with "One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all." As a thirty-five-year-old resident of Charlottesville, I don't understand how so many people can stand for the divide and hate being represented in this room. As a supporter of Wes Bellamy and as one of the campaign representatives that helped him get in the seat that he is actually in now, I know that he has done so much to bridge the gap, to make this city comfortable and acceptable to us all regardless of skin color and economic status. The fact that this city recognizes Robert E. Lee is beyond me. Robert E. Lee deserves no recognition. He stood for the divide and the oppression of blacks, just like the author, Jason Kessler. Before you make an assumption and call someone a racist, make sure you have the definition of racist and what it means. Racist means a person who believes that a particular race is superior or have power over another. We as blacks could never be superior or have power over anyone in this country, period, because everything we touch is built on processes from our founding fathers and lawmakers, which we all know are very few that are black. We lack equal housing, education, equal pay. We lack so much here in America, and here we are in a room that's full of hate. I also wanna say that I appreciate everyone saying that they stand beside Wes and want Wes to continue to do what he do on the city council. However, I also have to agree with Nakaya that I'm one that told him he owed no one an apology. Until you can take someone's rights away, I stand here like Patrick Henry, "Give me liberty or give me death." If he doesn't have his freedom of speech, if you don't have these unalienated rights that was given to us not by any man in this room, not by anyone or any of our ancestors, if you don't have that and we all stand here as citizens and you guys, as people that are representing, pushing laws and being lawmakers or being a part of being lawmakers, how can you take away amendments? How can you do that? And for Mr. Kessler who's sitting in this room, before you put out a story on a tweet that says a man represents rape, there was a national syndicated radio host, Tactstone, that wrote that tweet. So before you write something on someone, make sure you have all the legitimate facts that go along with it. That's how the justice system should work, just like Mr. Fogel said. If, if we gonna be about liberty and justice for all, then we have to start by doing it all the time. The law is concrete and cement. It does not bend, it does not fold, and it cannot break.
Thank you. Okay. Alright, everyone, we're gonna move on to the next item. Thank you all. It takes a, it takes a lot of courage for folks to come up and speak in matters of the public. Does anybody have, you know, we do in these procedures, we generally, you know, defer to our city manager to respond to items, but if anybody would like to speak, you can speak to, for our procedures, to individual matters raised.
I will just say-
No, and please, sir, sir-
It's our turn now.
Do not interrupt, it's our turn.
I will say-
You cannot speak without recognition from the chair, so, so don't, sir, sir, sir-
I will say that I feel perfectly-
Please cease.
-a right to speak at this moment, but I don't need to. Thank you.
Okay. Any others?
Well, I'd like to just thank everybody who came out. This was a great demonstration of our city and the patience we have, so just thank you all very much for coming out.
Others? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to speak your minds. Thank you. And we have another Matters by the Public session after the conclusion of this meeting, where anybody else can speak, and there's no limit at that one, and we will be here to hear you. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Ms. Rice, would you mind reading the consent agenda for us? If you could wait to speak until you're out in the halls, we would appreciate it so that we could move on to a couple things. Thank you.
Item A, minutes for November twenty-first. Item B, an appropriation, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and nineteen cents, from my Vanna Water and Sewer Authority, for reimbursement of utility betterment for Route two fifty bypass, second of two readings. Item C, an appropriation, one million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents, to Virginia Department of Transportation for overpayment of funds received for Route twenty bypass, second of two readings. Item D, an appropriation for new sidewalk ADA improvements and bicycle improvements, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, second of two readings. Item E, an appropriation, the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Partnership Grant, six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, second of two readings. Item F, an appropriation, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-three cents, to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, first of two readings. Item G, a resolution, Cedars Court Apartments Special Use Permit, first of one reading. Item H, a resolution, seventeen thirteen Jefferson Park Avenue Alpha Chi Sigma Fraternity Special Use Permit, first of one reading. Item I, a resolution, expand career pipelines and paid apprenticeships for infrastructure building and repair, first of one reading. Item J, an ordinance, West Main Street Density Amendment, first of two readings. And item K, a resolution, Statement of Principle, A Commitment to Pluralism, Inclusion, Equity, and Justice, first of one reading.
Okay. Any questions? I think we're gonna have one item that's, that we're gonna talk about. Or, do you wanna move it off?
I actually would not like to move this item off unless somebody else wants to, but I would like to read the text of item K. It was a item that I had brought up last month, or last meeting under New Business, and I think everyone agreed to put it on the agenda, which is why it's here, but I'd just like the public to hear it.
Any, everyone's, yeah.
Is that alright?
Yep.
And this came out of both talks that we had on city council as well as discussions we had at the National League of Cities meeting last month, that a lot of cities were really looking at the, the rise in very hateful language and rhetoric and bullying and violence in this country, and feeling a need to issue statements of principle of what we stand for. So, this is a Statement of Principle, A Commitment to Pluralism, Inclusion, Equity, and Justice. Advancing equity and inclusion is critical to the success of our community and our nation. Our diversity is the source of our pride and our prosperity. As political rhetoric on the national level has become heated and divisive, and with an increase in hateful and dangerous speech and acts locally and nationwide, many of our neighbors have experienced fear and anxiety. At this time, we must strongly reaffirm our commitment to diversity and to fostering an atmosphere of inclusion. We reject hate speech, hate crimes, harassment, racial bias, homophobia, Islamophobia, antisemitism, anti-immigrant discrimination, and harmful bias and discrimination in all its forms. We welcome all people and recognize the rights of individuals to live their lives with dignity, free of fear and discrimination because of their faith, race, sexual orientation or identity, national origin or immigration status. We believe the public sector has a critical role in ensuring the public good and pledge to continue our work in making our services and programs accessible and open to all. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Um, yes.
No, what, Ms. Galvin?
Mayor Signer, I would like to just make a brief comment about one of the items after we adopt the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there, Mr. Bellamy seconded? Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? Consent agenda carries five to zero.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Signer. I'm gonna be speaking briefly on a resolution, that's item I, on the consent agenda, and that is a resolution to expand career pipelines and paid apprenticeships for infrastructure building and repair. It's something that could get lost, but it's a very significant step that this council has taken, because it pertains to the hiring and apprenticeships for our own local residents when building infrastructure projects. In this case, it was Belmont Bridge, and it's built upon an earlier resolution that called for the same sort of approach to the building of West Main Street. So state procurement law doesn't allow us to require outside contractors to hire local, but the local government can hire local, and the growing Opportunity Apprenticeship Program gave us the vehicle to do that. So again, I just wanted to point that out to the public, that this is an important second resolution, along with the West Main Street resolution, that is moving us towards a policy of local hiring and providing paid apprenticeships for local residents when we are building our bridges and when we're rebuilding our streets.
Thank you.
Mayor Signer, may I add one small comment to Ms. Galvin's points? I think it's important, although there's a lot of other things going on tonight, we need to make sure that the constant, the statements made by Ms. Zekos as well as Ms. Galvin are not, do not go unintended, or that we do not fully understand the words that they just, that just came out of their mouths. We are looking to become, and we hope that we already are, and continuing on, becoming a city that is all-inclusive to everyone. And furthermore, as individuals, many of whom are just in the room, oftentimes discuss about how we want to see more jobs come to the area, how we would like to see more apprenticeship and training programs. As Galvin has eloquently just laid out how we are moving forward doing so. So when we look at the future projects that are coming up, it is not that we are outsourcing those jobs, we are looking now to train the individuals so that they are prepared to take those jobs and work to make our city a better place. Jobs that actually pay rather well, so please make sure that we understand and take heed to those comments. So thank you both.
Thank you. I want a second just comments. Okay. Any further? We voted, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
Onto the budget.
Moving ahead, onto the budget. So item number two on the agenda, this is fiscal year, this is a public hearing and an appropriation. We have, we have a hearing, we have two folks who have signed up on this. This is for our fiscal year two thousand and sixteen year-end appropriation. If anybody else would like to sign up, please come up and you'll, you'll be able to speak. So, this is the first of two readings, which means we'll just do a motion, a motion and a second tonight. Mr. Chris Cullinan, Director of Finance, is gonna be presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, my name is Chris Cullinan. I'm the Director of Finance for the city. This agenda item is a public hearing for the year-end appropriation for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, which ended June thirtieth of this year. The Finance Department is in conjunction with the city's external auditors is finishing up the audit for FY sixteen. The city's general fund ended the year with a positive surplus of approximately six million dollars, or about three point eight percent of the original budget. FY sixteen's revenues, the trends for FY sixteen are similar to previous fiscal years with revenues performing better than expected and departments spending less than budgeted. More specifically, revenues were approximately three million dollars better than expected, led by real estate taxes, personal property taxes, lodging taxes, and meals taxes. One specific revenue I wanted to discuss with you this evening is the meals tax. As you'll recall, back in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, as part of the adoption of the FY sixteen budget, council raised the meals tax from four percent to five percent. A part of that motion also, council also directed the city manager to report to city council the total amount of meals tax revenue received by the city for the period from July one, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and the average annual amount of meals tax revenue received by the city for the three fiscal years immediately prior to July one of two thousand and fifteen. If the amount of fiscal year two thousand and sixteen meals tax revenue is less than ten percent than prior three-year average on a rate-adjusted basis, the city manager shall report, the city manager's report shall also include an analysis of the factors that may be responsible for a decline in the meals tax. The city council finds that the decline in revenue was attributable to one percent increase in the meals tax, which became effective July one, two thousand and fifteen. City council shall take necessary actions to repeal the one percent increase effective midnight, June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. So with that reporting requirement in place and the fiscal year completed, in the staff memo, you will see a comparison of the three previous fiscal years for meals tax revenue received on a rate-adjusted basis, taking out the one percent increase, and the meals tax revenue has increased each of those years. Just a little under one percent for FY fourteen, six point seven percent in FY fifteen, and a little over four percent for the most recently completed fiscal year. On the expenditure side of the equation, expenditures for FY sixteen were down approximately three million dollars under budget. Some of the more significant savings included the Children's Service Local Act, Children's Services Act Local Match, the Charlottesville-Albemarle Joint Security Complex, the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, Parks and Recreation, Social Service Matching Funds, the local funds the city matches state and federal funds with, and then finally just department-wide savings throughout the city. So, the item before you this evening, of the approximately six million dollar surplus, staff is recommending the following two items. First, that approximately two million dollars be approved for one-time uses and carried over to the current fiscal year. And two, that staff requests that the balance of approximately four million dollars be placed in the capital improvements plan contingency account purposes, financial policies for future programming. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just because of the, getting the report out about the impact of the one, of the one percent meals tax on our local restaurant industry. And I, my question is, given the upward trajectory- And I, my question is, given the upward trajectory of the revenues, is it safe to say that there was no negative impact on retail, restaurant retail activity because of the one percent?
Certainly is indicated by the performance of the meals tax revenue. Meals sales were up, therefore, revenue collected as a result of that was up as well.
Thank you very much, 'cause I think that was important to just underline, because that was the reason why that clause was put in there, was in, to be sensitive to the concerns of the restaurant industry, and it does sound like that they're still very well and alive and thriving, so, thank you.
Any other questions? We will move on to our public hearing then on this. We have two folks signed up. Again, if anybody else would like to come up, just, I'll put the sheet down there. Ms. DeeDee Smith, speaking.
Good evening.
Evening.
DeeDee Smith, twenty-six fifty-two Jefferson Park Circle. And I've just come over from a meeting at the African-American Heritage Center, on whose board I serve and who would likely benefit from my remarks, but I'd like to make it clear that I'm speaking entirely for myself. When I heard what this year's surplus would be, I thought, well, how fortuitous is that? Because six million dollars is almost exactly what it would take to save the Jefferson School City Center. And I don't use that word "save" lightly. And and this is what kind of flips me out, is I don't really hear anybody talking about what's gonna happen just less than one year from right now to the tenants in the Jefferson School City Center. And without getting too in the weeds, 'cause it's a very complicated situation, just let me explain what I'm talking about. Back in two thousand and seven, the city, who owned the Jefferson School at the time, gave Jefferson to a private LLC in order to take advantage of historic tax credits, all good, for the renovation. And in turn, the LLC took out a six million dollar, five-year balloon loan to cover the rest of the renovation costs. In a rather elaborate scheme, the plan was to, in this five-year period, pay off the loan through fundraising, and a foundation was formed, and the Blue Moon Fund was, contributed a lot of funds to subsidize the the cost for the rents for the tenants, just in order to bridge this gap. And and so, and so therefore, at the end of the five years, if the loan is paid off, and the tenants would need to cover only maintenance and utilities. And just in case you think that's kind of a wacky idea, that's that's what happens at McGuffey Art Center, because the city owns the building. But here's the problem, the foundation did not, that was formed to, the fundraise did not raise the money. In fact, they didn't really raise much of any of it. So, instead, what's happening is the LLC is refinancing, this time without the help of the Blue Moon Fund, which means many, if not most, of the tenants will not be able to afford the rental terms. And recently, I was in a meeting with the tenants, because I'm on the board of the Heritage Center, and they're, even the big players were kind of shaking their heads, because let's face it, it's not what they signed up for five years ago. The loan was supposed to be paid off. And it's later in the conversation in this meeting, they got to talking about renting to for-profit businesses. And it's really not that big a leap to imagine that a private entity will come in, in not too long in the future, and buy Jefferson, build condos, whatever, and will be right back to where our conversation started. And in my humble opinion, the city needs to own Jefferson School, just like the city owns McGuffey School, the former, is that my time?
Yeah.
Okay, the former school. So, I just ask that perhaps you could suggest to just look at a cost-benefit analysis to see what it might take.
Thank you. Rebecca Quinn?
Rebecca Quinn, one oh four Fourth Street, here in the city. And I just have a short item. Seeing the surplus in the budget reinforces my resolve to demonstrate that the payment in lieu of taxes charged on gas utility clients should be repealed or at least scaled back over time. I believe it is patently unfair to take about three million dollars from only a portion of city residents, those who happen to use gas for cooking and heating, and use it to pay for general government support that benefits all citizens and all property owners. I believe this burden falls disproportionately on low-income owners and renters in older homes that are often not very energy efficient, such that their gas usage is probably very high during the winter, if they are using gas for heat. I am going to submit a Freedom of Information Act request for data that I believe will demonstrate my position. City staff have, from time to time, said they have no way to tell which accounts use gas for heating and which use it for cooling. I believe there's a fairly simplified way to do so, and that the end results can be mapped to communities that will show us where those heating accounts are located and which neighborhoods are most adversely impacted. And I would like to see, if not this budget, then subsequent budget, when the data are available, to take another look at that unfair tax and find a way to better serve our low-income, struggling people who are still dealing with poor, low-energy homes. We've got great programs, I hope, or some, I hope those who have not yet saw a leap energy evaluation will do so. Even if you can't change all of the insulation in your house, you can still find out some interesting and low-cost and beneficial ways to save energy. But in the meantime, I still believe the payment in lieu of taxes has a significant unfair component to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter of the appropriation? Okay. All right. Are there any questions or further discussion before motion?
Mayor Signer, I'd like to make one comment in regards to Ms. Smith's points about the surplus possibly being used for the Jefferson School. I think she has a very valid point, and one of the things that I would love to hear us either explore or discuss for for the public is in regards to how those funds could be allocated in order to help the Jefferson School in some capacity. I think her point in regards to is, no mistake, that the six million dollars essentially that's needed for the Jefferson School and the potential monies that we've seen could indeed line up. And I know that the Jefferson School is indeed going through some tough financial times. So, I think for the public's sake, it is important that not only we either discuss it or perhaps provide that information for them, and furthermore, I think we do indeed need to find different ways in which we can properly support the Jefferson School, similar to how we do the McGuffey Art Center or the Discovery Museum and other places of that nature.
Ms. Bemick?
And so, that study was, you're gonna have to say it again for me, the value, whatever it was, what was it?
Pilot?
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 Not the pilot. I'm sorry if I missed. Cost-benefit analysis, yeah, I would as a start, like to see us do that.
And I, I think that what we have before us tonight is not necessarily, you know, antithetical to that discussion. I think that the large portion of this fund actually goes back into the capital fund, which is where that sort of thing would come from, and I do support having that discussion as we're going through the budget process.
And Mayor Signer, if I might just add that, when are we going to be having our discussion about the capital budget?
We'll, we'll begin a discussion about that, actually, this Thursday, when we talk about budget guidelines, but then, of course, when the, when we have our budget discussion in January, we'll, we'll go more in-depth on this, in-depth on the CIP.
And would that give you enough time to begin a more in-depth analysis of the situation of the Jefferson School? Between now and January?
Not between now and Thursday.
Not between now and Thursday.
Not between now and Thursday. I'm not saying that, but between now and when we meet again in January, at least give us the overview.
I think we could, I think we could do an overview on what's going on there.
That would be really helpful.
And then we could talk about the city's investment in that, which is about seven million dollars upfront.
That'd be extremely, the history, the, the overview trajectories and everything.
Yeah, we, we can probably do that by January twenty-fourth.
Well, I would firmly support that.
Right. And it doesn't, as, as Counselor Sekas mentioned, this doesn't preclude us from moving forward with the year-end discussion, because there's four million dollars that, close to four million dollars that will go into the CIP contingency fund, and will be sitting there if city council decides to do something different with that money, and to to use it towards the Jefferson School.
So, I, I'd like to make a motion that we do, this is just a first reading of this, so that this go forward, and in making that motion, I will say that, just to be clear to the public, that a lot of the items that we're spending this money on are things that are carryover from the previous year, things that didn't get spent. They're not just like, oh, look, we have extra money, let's spend it on something. These are things that were either unfunded in the past year but needed, or they were things that were approved for the last year but hadn't yet been done. And so, I, I, these are the, the council recommend, are the staff recommendations, and I think all of the counselors have looked at them, and some of our major concerns have been dealt with in these, so I'm, I support this, this particular.
Ms. Sekas?
Yes.
Also, before we get to, have we, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay, so we're waiting for a second.
Second.
Well, we already have a second, so.
No, we're not.
I just will say that we have a very, the, the four million dollars are going back into, if this goes forward in the second reading, back into the capital budget. The capital budget has a tremendous amount of action in it, a lot of hard decisions that are very important, hugely impactful, about race and equity and infrastructure and environment and energy, lots and lots of things happening in this. And we will have a very fulsome, rich, multifaceted discussion then about prioritizing goals within the capital budget. So, it's a, I, I'm eager to have this discussion, and we subject all of those to very searching scrutiny, as well as this kind of, you know, intake from the public and trying to get it right. And we have some big decisions next year, also about capital and our tax base and our debt ceiling and things like this, that will affect the amount of money that we're also looking at, which will also impact this. So, I think this is a little bit cart before the horse in terms of that discussion we're gonna have about the amount of money we're looking at for these, but, but it's a very valuable to hear and have highlighted.
I think you're absolutely right. I just think for the public's information, we're having one budget session, a pre-budget session of sorts, on this Thursday, which is the eighth, and then the next one will be January twenty-fourth, correct?
That's correct.
So, we wanna make sure that the public is just well aware, because those meetings are open to everyone, and will we have public comment at those meetings?
Yeah, we usually at the end of the meeting.
Right. So, so just for information, it is important for everyone to show up again on the eighth, December eighth, that's this Thursday, and then January twenty-fourth, to let us know about your budgetary concerns, so that we can move forward in the best way. But thanks again for two individuals who commented.
And before we move on, there was one other thing I wanted to mention that's in this proposal. The city did a, I guess it's called a compensation analysis, looking at how the city's salaries for various positions compare to the, to the, to the market. You know, who else might be hiring the people we're trying to hire, who might lure them away, where they might go instead of coming here? And so, there is a, I, how much was it, two hundred thousand dollars?
Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of this, but, of this appropriation is actually to bring up to scale, to the, the proper level, especially our firefighters and our police, which we found were below, and, and it should help us attract and retain the top folks for those positions, and it's also just the right thing to do, I think. And then some are from other departments as well, but that was the bulk of them. I just thought that was important to let you know.
A lot of staff work has gone into this, and it's important figuring out these decisions, so credit to all the, to Mr. Cullinan and his staff, Mr. Jones. All right, that's a first and a second. We'll move forward to the next reading on it. We are moving on now to public, item number three, public hearing and ordinance. This is Ragged Mountain Natural Area Rules of Use. Now, let me say, we're gonna have a presentation from staff here. Well, that's not a bad idea. We typically take a break at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
It's been an energetic evening so far, so maybe we take a break right now. I wanted to tell everybody, before we move on to this, we've had a conferral among almost all of us and some advice, but we have thirty people, twenty-seven folks signed up. If we, council can make a decision about the amount of time that each speaker gets, we feel that it would be fair to go to two minutes rather than three, that we'll, we'll hear the sentiments that most people have. Otherwise, this is, will take an hour and a half to, to hear from everybody, and that means we'll all be here until ten-thirty before we start deliberating. So, if everybody is, I, I, I feel like we, I've conferred with all my colleagues except for Ms. Galvin.
She said yesterday.
I just said, I wrote it down there.
Okay, so we're gonna do two minutes rather than three. Please take the five minutes that will take right now as a break to revise your.
And we really will be back in five minutes.
Your comments accordingly. I hope that'll be okay. If everybody could be back in here by ten until, by ten till nine, we will get started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Lost one, two.
Yeah. All right, we're going to try to get going.
Can you try to find our errant councillors?
Okay, we are going to hear from Brian Daley first, Director Parks and Recreation, who will present. This is the first of two readings. We'll do a motion and a second. Mr. Daley, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. The item under consideration this evening is the potential of expanding the allowable uses at the Ragged Mountain Natural Area. Over the past year, staff has used the city's adopted park master planning process to engage community input and opinion regarding the permitted uses at Ragged Mountain. The final step in that process is this evening, and that is the presentation of the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to city council. Additionally, I've been asked to pass along a brief summary of the comments on the issue from the Planning Commission at their November meeting. The Planning Commission had a substantial discussion about the future uses of Ragged Mountain. All six commissioners who were present agreed that Ragged Mountain is an important resource for the city, but the commissioners were evenly split between those who favored Ragged Mountain as a natural area without expanded recreational uses, and those who favored more intensive use, for example, biking. Those who supported mountain biking expressed the opinion that bike accessibility from city streets makes Ragged Mountain a unique biking experience, that does not involve driving a car to a mountain biking location, and that outdoor recreational opportunities would be increased by adding biking. Those favoring Ragged Mountain remaining as a natural area on the Planning Commission for hiking and walking and other less intensive uses spoke to the biodiversity of the area and the need to quiet, need for quiet restorative spaces. Regardless of their opinions on more versus active, more, more active versus more passive uses, all Planning Commissioners support emphasizing the natural qualities of the site for all users, monitoring and addressing the potential for overuse, and including professional landscape architects in designing any new very intensive use trails. I would like to just make a personal comment. In my eleven years as tenure here on the staff, this issue has engaged in more public input, more comment for any Parks and Recreation project that we've done. Regardless of one, the community's opinion on the issues here, everyone has been very, very respectful throughout the process of staffing each other, and it really demonstrates the deep commitment to the, of the community to its park system. I'd like to now introduce Dave Hirschman. David is the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and he's actually going to present the Advisory Board's recommendations to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm the current chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I'll present briefly the deliberations of the board. And we did deliberate, we had a lot to deliberate on. We spent time out there hiking, boating, doing the various things, not biking and not taking any dogs, of course. But we did read all the comments, we had a good bit of consultation with Natural Heritage Program from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, and of course, we went through the, the planning process. So the Parks and Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board did deliberate on this according to the council's mandate for our group, and also the master planning process. One of the things that some of the board members pointed out was that even though there's various opinions, it's obvious in this, there's a great deal of common ground, and I think Brian alluded to that, of great deal of admiration, love of this park system, the natural areas, and the outdoor experiences that people have in our area, and that spans all the people that commented through the many months. And I think it's important to keep in mind that there was a lot of common ground, even though you do hear a lot of division. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board, in our deliberations, we were often not unanimous with each other, and of course, this reflects the broader community. When it did come time to take votes, there was one unanimous vote, and that was to allow hiking, trail running, fishing, boats with electric motors, or no motors, as the case with kayaks or canoes, and it was also unanimous to not allow dogs. After that, there was various opinions about mountain bikes. Some on the advisory board felt that allowing bikes would increase the overall level of use, and that would be damaging to, to the area, and some also felt that the chief purpose of this natural area is not for recreation, but as an ecosystem and a natural area. However, when the board did vote, there was a majority that voted to allow mountain bikes, but with several very important caveats about where and how mountain bikes would use Ragged Mountain. The board in general supported separate trails for hiking and mountain biking to the extent possible, maybe not a hundred percent, but wherever the terrain allowed opportunities for separating the trails, the board was in favor of that. The board was also in favor of not having shared use on what we call single track trails, where there's very narrow or steep trails. The board was also in favor, or majority was in favor, of not allowing mountain biking from the dam to the pontoon bridge and up on, around the southwest corner of the property. This was because of the nature of the terrain being very steep and being very narrow, and our concern for the experience of shared use in that particular area. So in the end, what the board was in favor of, those who were in favor of allowing mountain biking, would be more of a out and back experience from the parking lot, but still quite a bit of trail use, as you can see from the map, for mountain biking, and quite a bit for just hiking, and all the mountain biking allowed trails would also be open to hiking as well, shared use. That's pretty much a summary of what the board deliberated on and voted on, and it's, it's not all one thing or another, so it was, it was qualified in terms of the majority that were in favor of the, allowing some limited mountain biking on the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daley, is that the extent of the presentations that we're going to hear? Okay. Are there any questions or comments at this point from staff?
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And that this, it could go to either of you or both of you, and it's related to the discussion about the, the way mountain biking trails are typically designed, and the phrase I've heard is a dispersion model, so that you, those, those users that actually go faster need to get away from the parking lot the quickest, and they also need to have kind of a continuous loop, in large part because it avoids backtracking and then doubling the amount of conflicts. So was any of that kind of discussion, was, did any of that kind of discussion take place on, during your deliberations?
Thank you for the question. To be specific, no, that discussion did not take place, and probably wouldn't take place until such time as where their bicycles were actually permitted on the property. In other locations in the park system, most of the trails are constructed in the same manner. There isn't necessarily a specific method of construction to support hiking or walking or bicycle, they're generally the same, and they're designed, those techniques are designed to prevent erosion and allow sustainability over time.
Hen?
Thank you.
You want to follow up? So how many, how many parks does the city have that allows bikes and dogs now?
All of them.
How many would that be?
Twenty-nine, I believe.
Twenty-nine of them, and how many do we have that, that do not allow bikes?
None.
And I heard.
Well, Ivy Creek Natural Area, which is owned by the city and the county, and Ragged Mountain are the two locations that the, that do not permit bicycles and dogs. All of the other trails are shared use throughout the system.
Okay. You might be able to answer this. I know Dave, I don't know. Did your recommendation language track, there apparently is a, is a county ordinance or a county thing, did your recommendation track what the county's language was? It seemed to track the, the language that was in the county's, I don't know what they call it, a policy, or, I think it was an ordinance, actually.
The, the county does have an ordinance, but our, the recommendation does not, the language in that is not necessarily, maybe I should defer to Craig.
That's correct.
Then I'll, I'll ask the question, which is, we've been, and I'm sure it'll come up today, too, and it is a question that's come to us by email, that there is an ordinance in the county which would seem to say that you can't have bikes on certain properties that the county has control over, and there's some folks who feel that that would apply to this, and so we asked our attorney, who said he didn't think that applied here, but maybe if you could tell us why.
Let me, let me start just, just a small bit of background.
Thank you.
As you know, normally, the jurisdiction of this governing body stops at the, at the city limits, and, and your ordinances apply to property within the city and the parks within the city. There are, however, two separate state statutes that give you jurisdiction over property beyond the city limits that's used for recreational uses, or as in this case, as a, as a water supply impound, and, and for Ragged Mountain, it's, it's the applicable statute, state statute is within five miles. So we do have jurisdiction here. The county does have a separate ordinance in their Parks chapter that is applicable just to Ragged Mountain reservoir. We have had a, a discussion about who has jurisdiction in this case. I'm not sure we see quite eye to eye, as, as attorneys frequently don't agree, and I think it's a good, good faith disagreement between who has jurisdiction here. The statute does, it does give the city jurisdiction, does say that you can impose rules and regulations by ordinance, and that is why we've gotten to, to this point. Having said that, the city's proposal and the county's or existing ordinance, as I read it, are very close. They list several activities that are authorized, and then their ordinance says everything that's not specifically authorized is prohibited. They don't specifically authorize jogging or running, they don't specifically authorize And I, I say that with, with one caveat, I mean, they have an ordinance for Sugar Hollow as well, which does not authorize biking yet. It's my understanding that biking does take place there, just from what I read, it's not personal experience. So that's, that's kind of a, a little bit of a difference of opinion. It, it may not mean anything if, if both, both parties end up in the same place. My communication with the county has been to invite their input on our proposed ordinance. You know, and again, as, as Mr. Daley alluded to, I think dogs was another issue that, that was subject of debate, and their ordinance right now doesn't allow dog walking, and the city's proposal doesn't allow dog walking. So my, my guess is bicycling will be the, the, the area where there may or may not be some disagreement between where the county is and where the city is.
And so what are you, are you saying, this is the first reading tonight, so we're not making a decision tonight, but are you suggesting that we move forward as if it does, and it will resolve it by the next reading, or, or what, what happens at this point?
I am, my advice would be to proceed with first reading, assuming you're ready, assuming there's a motion and a second, and that two of you are comfortable with it going forward to second reading, like all ordinances, it requires two readings before council. And, and let's see what the county says, if they want to provide you with input or comment before the second reading, but at, at that point, assume we'll be ready for adoption if, if majority of council supports it on the second reading.
Thank you.
I, I do have another question for Mr. Brown, and it has to do with procedure, because we have before us an ordinance to pass, but there's also in the staff memo, there is a Ragged Mountain draft trail plan that also is a subject of debate and discussion. Would it be appropriate to kind of combine those two, to discuss and make a motion to adopt the ordinance and move forward with a discussion on giving staff direction on the, on the trail plan itself? Or should it be a situation where we would vote on the ordinance alone and then follow up with a separate, separate motion, second motion, to deal with a resolution to address any changes that council might want to make to the Ragged Mountain draft trail plan itself?
In my, in my opinion, the second approach would be more efficient. Just, just because the, the trail plan, which is primarily a map, and you can see there it says draft trail plan, trail use plan, hasn't been finalized yet, and I think if you keep it separate, you're, if you're so inclined, you certainly could retain the authority to see any changes or to review any changes, but if it does need to be changed, you're not faced with amending the ordinance, which is a completely separate procedure.
But we could make a, a directive to staff about how council would like, would like to proceed with that plan?
You, you certainly could, and, you know, if, if a final plan, if, if biking is approved, for example, or even if it's not, if, if there's a proposed trail plan, you can, you can approve it as proposed with the direction to staff to bring, to inform you of any significant changes, and then it would be up to you whether you wanted to bring those back for some type of formal review.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just want a more note on this. I have conferred with my colleagues in the county about this, and this, this process is a, is a good one. We just want to emphasize they are our colleagues and partners. We do have disagreements on many issues, we try to work through them. On this, there is this matter of conflicting ordinances. We do have a process where we'll kind of take a first cut at this now. They have a meeting, this Wednesday, they can discuss this, we can hear back from them, but they know that we're doing this, and this, this has been a fairly full exchange so far, and we are hopeful that this will all work out just fine.
Well, let me, if I could jump in on that, it caught at least one supervisor by surprise, and I'll be meeting with two others in this coming week. So it, it appears to me that So it appears to me that the hangup is going to be mountain bikes. You know, we try to promote city-county collaboration, and it appears to me, I would suggest, that we let these informal negotiations between the two legal minds proceed before we go ahead and pass something. I don't know what the percentage of, how it would stack up for passing or not in the county, I don't know that at this point, but at least we should have these preliminary talks, I think, before we go ahead and do this. I mean, what would it hurt, that the parks are not going anywhere?
I have just one final thing. I'd just like, partly because he's my neighbor, but also, I went to one of the hearings, the one at the Jefferson School that the Parks Committee Commission had, and I just wanted to give a big shout out to David Hirschman for his leadership of that body, keeping it together, keeping everybody working forward, and also to the entire committee. I was so impressed with their attention and their diligence. We just, today, in our boards and commissions, two members whose terms had expired actually volunteered to do it again. So it's clear that you've created a work environment that they feel supported, so thank you so much for that.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to try to gather this. We've got a lot of folks here who have showed up to talk. Mr. Fenwick, if that, we should, at this point, we're no longer asking questions of a presenter, so if there's a motion on the floor about delaying this, then that would be properly framed. So, Mr. Fenwick, if you would like to do that, then you're free to do that, and try and have a second, but that sounded like what you were saying, and then we can debate that, but if you don't have a motion ready, then...
Yeah, well, I would make that motion, that we let the legal staff of both city and county work this. Hopefully, it won't take that long, but I'd do that before I went to the ordinance.
I'm actually inclined to second that. It's not a disrespect at all to anyone else who feels otherwise, I just do think there's validity in trying to find out and making sure that we have those ducks in a row first before we proceed forth.
Okay. So, wait, are you inclined, or is that a second?
I'm sorry, second. I'm inclined to second, so...
Then we have a motion and a second.
Now you have a second.
So discussion...
So would that be a discuss?
Discussion on that, yep. And we have, if anybody, well, you've already spoken, so we have, people can speak for three minutes about this, they can ask questions.
Take 30 seconds, just to say that I actually thought a lot about this as we were coming up to this agenda. If it were a one-reading agenda or item, I would definitely support that. I think because this is a first reading, and we know we have two weeks, if it's not resolved by then, I would support something like that, but today I'm ready to move forward.
And Mayor Signera, I think we need to provide clarity to the process. It's about time for the council to weigh in on its opinion and its direction it wants to give to this process. Any further delay has a chance of just making it much more murky and complicated. I think it's time to make a decision tonight, to give that clear direction. Whatever we find out in the two weeks between the county and the city will certainly have an impact on the final decision, but I don't see any value at this point to delay.
Okay. And I, that's my opinion as well. So we can, but I'll call for a vote on the, is there any further responses that either of you two want to make?
Want to try to persuade us?
Okay.
No, no, I mean, again, I understand Ms. Galvin's point, and I fully understand your point in regards to let's move forward, but one of the things that I am concerned about, and it seems like we already have the vote, so I won't belabor this point, but one of the things I am concerned about is kind of how Mr. Fenwick alluded to, if we move forward, and then we kind of find out that this isn't the direction that our colleagues in the county want to go, we may have essentially did this for naught. And I am concerned about that.
I will just say that my, you know, I generally, I trust our council on this, and I feel like I've gotten advice that has reassured me about the, all of the issues that I would want for our public and our responsibility of the body to move forward. I feel very comfortable with that. I think that these are going to end up, that's my response to the analysis that we've gotten.
Mr. Fenwick's question wasn't answered. His point, his point that he just made, or his question that he raised, rather, in regards to, he had spoken to one board supervisor member, and they were caught off guard in these meetings with a couple others. His point, I mean, there wasn't, no one commented or said anything, I mean, he essentially asked a question.
Mr. Mayor, I will say, just again, for background, there was a, this actually came before council last year, and this is significantly the same ordinance, I think, with the exception of dog walking is no longer allowed, and I know, I personally provided a copy of that draft to the county in September of 2015.
That's 14 months ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't mean to say that I had, or they had not known 14 months ago. It just wasn't recently. It was, I think the wording that I heard was, it just fell out, it fell off the table or something. I think that was what she said. It fell off the table, and I didn't know where it was. So she's going to do some more work on it.
Well, there certainly was a long gap between when it came before this council last year and tonight.
And I was concerned, because county-city collaboration is such an issue now, to do that before we had this legal matter taken care of, which is fairly easy to do, I would think, yes or no, seems precipitous to me, out of respect for the county, so...
I'm following it.
If you got the votes, you got the votes.
Well...
And, so we've...
We haven't withdrawn the motion, so let's call a vote on that motion, is that okay? All in favor?
Of Mr. Fenwick's motion.
Of Mr. Fenwick's motion, right. Well, all in favor and all against, okay, so we're voting, so I guess we do them all on the same.
Okay, we're against.
So that, the motion fails three to two. Okay. So let's move on. Any other, any further business?
Do we make a motion then, to the corollary to that?
Well, we're going to hear from the public now.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, why we were having this motion.
Well, because it was made before the...
Oh, okay.
Because of one of the members.
Get it.
And second. So, okay, so we now are going to move to public hearing. We've got presently 35 people signed up. We've got two minutes for each person, that means all of us. Everybody here is hungry and eager to get to some kind of movement on this, interested, excited. 9:15, so that means we are finishing this. If everybody goes to the full brink of your two minutes, we'll be out of here, and we'll start deliberating in 70 minutes. So I would encourage you, if you feel like you can express it more efficiently, consider the, you know, consider that. But you have, you have up to two minutes, and so we're going to move ahead. Case Lotter is first.
Please keep Ragged Mountain area free of bikes and dogs. Sorry for my voice. For walkers, including seniors like me, who enjoy quiet but challenging hikes without driving to Shenandoah National Park. Alternatives such as county's Hedge Row property adjacent to Ragged Mountain are intended for multiple use, as is nearby Fox Haven Farm owned by UVA. I understand that the PAC will be discussing Hedge Row and hopefully Fox Haven soon. Ragged Mountain is only one of two natural areas. For those who want more activity, over 70 miles of bicycle trails currently exist in other county and city parks. Weldon Cooper studies show that seniors over 65 live in one of every four houses, and this number is increasing. Ragged Mountain offers active seniors a quiet environment for short walks or longer hikes. Of course, younger people also benefit from stepping away from electronics and athletics to quiet contemplation in a natural setting. The youth group of mostly teenage boys who bird with Monticello Bird Club is a good example of this. The city's ecological study authenticates Ragged Mountain's unique biological diversity. Like a wilderness area on federal lands, it should be open for minimal human activity. However, if you vote for shared use, the council should retain a landscape architect to ensure that biological diversity is protected, and to the extent possible, retention of the human experience of quiet nature. Ragged Mountain is a treasure. To quote the report, "Only a few miles of the city, residents find vast and wondrous forests that have long inspired naturalists, poets, educators, and artists, such as Edgar Allan Poe, who wandered among its hills and wrote A Tale of the Ragged Mountains." Thank you.
Thank you. So because Ms. Lotter is a former mayor, she got to go a few seconds over her two minutes. We have Brian Musinski.
Brian Musinski from 1505 Greenleaf Lane. Thank you for not letting Bob Fenwick delay this process anymore. He did it last year about this time when the city council was geared up to approve bicycling at Ragged Mountain, I believe. He delayed it for the studies, the environmental studies. He tried to delay it again this evening. Many, many people have spoken on the benefits of cycling more eloquently than I. I would just like to say that bicycling is wholesome, helpful, and benevolent, and any restrictions or repression of the proliferation of bicyclists is a step in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Lerdaux.
I'm Manuel Lerdaux of 329 Parkway Street in Charlottesville. I'm also a bike commuter and avid mountain biker, and former volunteer, trail builder, and trail maintainer of mountain bike trails in a previous life in the coast range of California. I am, by trade, a professional ecologist, and have been doing that for about the last 25 years, working mostly in forest ecosystems related to conservation. And I want to raise a couple of points about the ordinance itself, the process that it went through, and I think a couple of important points that haven't yet been addressed, and that should be. One, Ragged Mountain at its inception was conceived not as a park, but as a natural area, and I think the use of that as a natural area needs to be considered, and certain aspects of the principles of natural areas are different from those of areas that are designed for recreational use by people as their primary function. For example, in the report that was submitted, there were the detailing of the biological communities, but very explicitly, no recommendations were made about the vulnerability or rarity of any of the species or communities there. There's in fact not been due diligence done on the environmental side, and I think the city should do that. Secondly, I'm disappointed at the lack of communication that appears to have occurred over this process with the county, not just because of the points regarding the ordinance. I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand those, but the fact that Ragged Mountain abuts county-controlled land, and it makes sense to develop coherent mechanisms there. Thirdly, the ordinance as written only speaks to recreational uses and does not speak to the management uses of Ragged Mountain. There's no discussion of management strategy or activities at all. It seems that it's incomplete as written. This is a major hole for anyone who's designing land use. I don't see how it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marilyn Philippi.
Marilyn Philippi, 4721 Helios Path, Barbersville. The Parks and Recreation Department's mission statement is to enhance the quality of life for all through the stewardship of public land and parks, and provide quality recreational experiences. I would like to address the aspect of providing quality recreational experiences for all. Many of the people fighting to keep Ragged Mountain for quiet enjoyment are older adults who value pursuits such as walking, appreciating nature, and enjoying some hard-to-find peace and quiet. According to a study done at UVA, which I think is a similar, is the same one Kay referenced, despite being a college town, about 24% of Charlottesville's population is aged 50 or older. However, I would estimate that activities appropriate for older residents would only total less than 10% of Parks and Rec's offerings. I was very surprised, therefore, that the board recommended adding another activity for families and younger adults, even though this will ruin one of the limited recreational activities available for older adults. I am using the word ruin intentionally. The trails that would be designated for foot traffic only are extremely challenging to walk on, and more appropriate for an adventurous hike than a quiet stroll. The trails that are comfortable to walk on are the ones that would also allow biking. A peaceful walk would be impossible, interrupted by the warning sounds of approaching bikers and the need to step off the trail to let them pass. As city councillors representing all the residents, please take into account the current imbalance in recreational opportunities and consider the needs of older adults when you evaluate the proposal to change Ragged Mountain to a park with biking trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Olivier.
Good evening, I'm Tom Olivier at 4632 Green Creek Road in Skyler area of Alamo County, and I'm speaking for the Piedmont Group of the Sierra Club. In 2004, the Alamo County Biodiversity Work Group identified the Ragged Mountain area as one of Alamo County's biologically most precious areas. Although a large dam has since been built on the site, the Center for Urban Habitat's Ecosystem Survey makes clear that the Ragged Mountain area remains home to a great variety of species and ecosystems. Some have sought expanded recreational opportunities at Ragged Mountain, leading to the ordinance before you tonight. However, we cannot assume that Ragged Mountain's rich biodiversity can persist in the face of increased contact with humans. For example, page 108 of the Ecosystem Survey lists seven species of already declining ground nesting birds that would be particularly vulnerable to disturbance at Ragged Mountain. In August, the Alamo County Natural Heritage Committee wrote to the Charlottesville Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, a copy is attached to the handout I gave you if you haven't seen it yet. The letter detailed extensive concerns about potential negative effects of expanded recreation on Ragged Mountain biodiversity. The Natural Heritage Committee of the county also offered to provide immediate assistance to the city in assessing vulnerabilities to biological resources at Ragged Mountain, and in the development of a recommendation of conservation measures. The Piedmont Group urges the city to explicitly acknowledge and accept its obligation to protect biological resources at Ragged Mountain. Tonight, following from your obligation and in keeping with the precautionary principle, we urge you not pass an ordinance that allows expanded recreational uses. Please instead strive to collaborate with Alamo County to protect the wonderful, cherished, but threatened life forms that still live there.
Thank you. And Nat Duesenberg?
Thank you.
I'm going to ask everybody to, I usually say this, it's such a busy evening, just please pay an eye on the device here, when you're at yellow, so I don't have to be the jerk, you're down to 15 seconds, and then when you're red, you hear the tone, but you've been forewarned, this device does that. So my apologies, Mr. Olivier.
My name's Annette Duesenberg, 816 Rougemont Avenue in the city. I just come to you in support of shared use, I'm an active member of the Charlottesville Area Mountain Bike Club. And on a personal note, due to more numerous ankle injuries than I could count, cycling is how I now enjoy the outdoors and nature. And you can ask anyone who I ride with, it's how I find solitude. I'm the one stopping to take pictures, stopping to enjoy the quiet, and would greatly enjoy an area like Ragged Mountain to do that. With a busy work and stressful life, I think that's just an area that is precious and should be enjoyed by everyone who can, and it's a unique, it's a unique place that the city has. I also feel like uniting with shared use, you would unite many groups who all care about the area, and I feel like we all respect the fact that there's precious fragile areas that need to be protected, but by inviting more groups, such as the Mountain Bike Club and trail runners, you have more people to help maintain the trails, and more people to teach others in the area to respect the trails. I've learned more from the club that I ride with on how to build trails than I ever have in all my years of hiking and backpacking and being outdoors. I just feel it would be an invaluable resource to have in this area. So I ask you to consider that as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Jean Philippi.
Good evening. Jean Philippi, Helios Path in Barbersville. I'm going to wing it... I'm going to wing it, it's going to be kind of clipped, we have it, so bear with me on the clipped nature of this. My points have to do with diversity. Barbersville loves diversity. Barbersville loves variety. In our recreational endeavors, we have a tremendous amount of that diversity, and I know we're going to want to keep that. Unfortunately, the proposal on the table reduces that diversity because you're going to confine the natural area type of recreation, which is what I, peace and quiet, which issued to a very small area, it'll be only at Ivy Creek. So right now, today, we've got 600 acres of natural areas. Take out Ragged Mountain, in my view, so you've got 200. That's a pretty big drop. That's like a 60% drop. We're getting additional mileage on the biking trails of about 10%, so that seems like an imbalance to me. There is another way to handle this. There are going to be lots of other places to improve biking trails over the next several years, and I think the way to do this is to keep Ragged Mountain as it is and expand the biking trails elsewhere, that can be really good and really terrific biking trails. And I think that's a way to not shrink natural areas, it's a way to keep diversity, which that's my major issue. Let's keep diversity and not have this situation where many years from now, we have an absolutely huge amount of biking trails, which would be great, in and of itself, a huge amount of biking trails would be great, but not at the expense of taking most of our natural area environment and removing it. So the, I'll just read the last part of this, and it says, "I asked you, I asked you to consider as the main issue here, does Charlottesville continue to foster its diverse set of recreational opportunities?" And...
Thank you.
I think that'll do it.[719.20][719.20](laughter)
Edward Montes Bradley, thank you.
What was that?
Next.
Edward Montes Bradley, 1165 Owensville Road. I'd just like to say that my argument has been very well expressed by my predecessors, so I'll sit this place to the next one.
What's your argument?
What is your position?
My position, the former mayor just said exactly how I felt about it. And the only thing I could add is that, just don't take Ragged Mountain. It's one of the only spaces where we can go. And I'm not good as a public speaker. I'm a filmmaker, so I speak through my films. By the way, I made a biography on Julian Bond, and if he would be here, he would be very proud of you. And it's the only one that does not accept bikes. I love bikes. I'm a bike myself, I bike with my children. But there is one place where we can't bike, and that is Ragged Mountain, just the way that Alan Poe saw it in his short story written before he died. It's one of the last things in his mind before he passed. Let's keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Freilich.
I'm Sam Freilich at 505 Rookwood Place, County, Charlottesville. I'm deeply concerned about the possibility of mountain biking in the Ragged Mountain natural area. The city paid for an extensive biological study of the natural area. The lead biologist said that our natural area has the most unique flora and fauna in the chain of adjoining mountains. He further stated that the movement of mountain bikes with their deep-tire treads would be extremely detrimental to the flora and fauna. A meeting will be held in January, governmental meeting, next month, to discuss the work needed to be done to expedite the development of bike-friendly hedgerow directly across from this property. Also, if the existing sign which states no bicycling is replaced with one that allows cycling, anyone that has a bike can ride anywhere they wish, off or on the trails, and no one can be all over the property to police it. For the sake of many, including middle-aged and older people that quietly walk these trails and can fully enjoy nature, please keep the natural area free of bicycles, as it has been for the past 100 years. As the Parks and Recreation sign reads, "No bicycling. Take only pictures. Leave only footprints." Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Chris Gist.
My name is Chris Gist, 307 Fifth Street, southwest of the city. I will spare you the Parks Department's mission statement again, but the key word in that mission statement is "all." All the citizens of Charlottesville. We deserve to have equal access as people choosing the activities we would like to do at Ragged Mountain. I'm not a full-time cyclist, I strive to be, I'm a bicycle lifestyleist, but one of the things I can't do, I can't jump on my mountain bike from my house and ride to a quality cycling experience in the city. Yeah, I can go to Belmont Park and ride around there or something, but that's not a quality mountain bike experience. Ragged Mountain is a great, beautiful place, but it is not pristine by any sense. I've been out there multiple times. Never have I been in a place where I can't hear the roar, the dull roar of the interstate. The interstate runs right through this property. We've heard a lot of talk about hedgerow. Nobody's going to be able to get it from the city to hedgerow without going down Route 29. There's nobody's going to mountain bike down Route 29 to get the hedgerow. The last thing I'd like to say is that I would wish the city council would pass an ordinance to allow cycling there and then leave the trail design up to the experts. The city employs a trail expert, a trail planner, that's his job, let him do his job. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hogg.
David Hogg, 270 Ipswich Place in the county. Been in the county since 1965. Amateur naturalist and associate of the Ivy Creek Natural Area. And I came tonight to speak about Ragged Mountain Natural Area. It's a resource that the city has to treasure. It's a resource for ecology. As we've heard, it's got unique plant life, wildlife. It's a resource for natural history. It's a place where teachers have brought children, brought adults, to learn about nature, firsthand, interactive experience, perhaps the best way to learn about nature. It's a resource for quiet. You've heard about repairing the soul by walking in a quiet place where you can just think about your life and think about things. And it's a fragile resource. If it's gone, I don't think it can be rebuilt. So I think that you have to weigh all of these things. I, myself, would recommend that you think of it as an IRA, that you take it out of the IRA when you really need it. Do you really need it now, or should you preserve it for the next generation of people? As the county, over the years I've been here, built up, we fight to have recreation areas, the quiet areas. You've got one now. Put it in the bank, take it out when you need it. Do you need it now? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. David White.
Good evening, and thank you for your service and putting up with late evenings and so forth. My name is David White. I live at 505 Park Plaza, downtown Charlottesville. And I have circulated a prior email to the body here outlining my thoughts about preserving, keeping Ragged Mountain as one of the only two natural areas in our parks. There's a thousand reasons. You've heard them, you will hear them, it'll go on into the evening, but we talk about an older population, we talk about the value of wildlife unimpeded, relatively unimpeded, talk about the fact that there are only two natural areas, there's already 70 miles of biking trails. Richmond, almost a million people, has 90 miles of mountain biking trails. Charlottesville community, 140,000, give or take, has 70-plus miles of mountain biking trails. I think we're doing pretty well on that avenue. One thing I'd like to point out, back in the night, 2013, the comprehensive plan for the city called for the development of a wildlife management plan. If this had been in place prior to this decision having to come to bear, I think there might have been perhaps a different outlook, both from the department and perhaps from you folks who do have the charge of making the final decision. It might be worthwhile, to my findings, I haven't been able to find where the development of this wildlife management plan has been initiated yet by Parks and Rec. And the world is full of the roads, you know, of good intentions, but it might do well to look forward to implementing or looking at doing something along those lines for this and for future decisions that you all will be making. Thank you so much.
I have Bin or Shenke, it's hard for me to read the first name.
Bill Shenker.
Bill, okay, sorry. Bill Shenker, sorry. That looks, sorry.
Sorry, bad handwriting, I'm old.
My contact lens is getting dry.
Anyway, I'm Bill Shenker, 420 Rook Road Drive, Ednum Forest. I'm also the president of the Ednum Forest Homeowners Association Board of Directors. We voted in July of 2016 to support maintaining current usage, hiking and fishing, and I'm a cyclist that did 60 miles last weekend. There are many cyclists on the board, including me, and in our community, but we live right next to this property. And it would be very easy just to go out my front door and turn left and go up that service road. But I think the decision you're faced with is, do you change 130 years of history? This has been bestowed to us. Decision-makers in the past have taken a long view, and I'm asking you to take a long view. We've heard that what's attractive about this is that you can go from your home to Ragged Mountain. You can do that. Once you turn off of Fontaine, you've got two miles of a very narrow, winding road. It's barely possible to have two cars pass on that road, much less having cyclists on each side going up and down. I would advise each of you to go up that road. You've got a safety issue, it's a risky bike ride, and as a bike cyclist, you're always ready to ignore some risk or manage your risk. You can't also, there's been suggested, well, people will enter from 250, and they'll go through Ednum Forest and then go up the service road. Your park staff has made it very clear that those roads are private roads, and you can't do that. Also, the Boarshead Trail no longer allows bikes on that trail. I would also suggest that when you meet, as two attorneys representing and the rest of the council meets, that you open this up, because there's an opportunity to take a macro view here, not a micro view of a city and a county, but a macro view. Consider the hedgerow property. Thank you.
Mary Ames. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Hi, I'm Mary Ames, 4176 Laird Lane in North Garden. As a recent newcomer to the area, I found Ragged Mountain to be just a very gem of an area for peace and quiet reflection, and I urge you to consider keeping it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. David Stackhouse.
That was 19 seconds. That was rather impressive.
You've set the bar.
Yeah, laugh a little.
David Stackhouse, I live at 1404 Westwood Road in the city. I'm going to be 68 in January. Part of the older crowd and an avid mountain biker, a trail builder and a community builder. I think trails build community. The Mountain Bike Club does a lot to build trails because we know we build community. If a mountain bike rode through this room right now, it would pass in about two seconds, quietly. If hikers walked through this room right now, they would pass in about 15 or 20 seconds, and they'd probably be conversing, they might be louder than the bike. So where do we get this idea that bikes ruin the natural area? I ride out in the Shenandoah National Forest on the Shenandoah Mountain Trail. It was put in by the Conservation Corps in the '30s. It's about 12 inches wide. It hasn't changed in the 10 years I've been riding it, and it's in a wild area that's natural. This area, if you allow mountain biking, will still be natural. It will still be a natural area. I urge you to look at option E. It had one trail going through the area. All other trails were hiker-only trails. All trails except one. That's what the mountain biking community wants. That trail did go a continuous loop. The loop will get traffic away from the parking area, away from the hikers, will allow the hikers to have a quiet contemplative experience. I know that everyone who's 68 is inactive like me. There's nothing wrong with sweat. There's nothing wrong with fun and nature. I don't know why people are bike haters, because we don't destroy the nature. So I urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Beaker.
Dan Beaker, 4174 Laird Lane in North Garden. I understand that you are under a lot of pressure to expand active use of Ragged Mountain, but I'm here to speak as a professor of natural sciences at Piedmont College. For over 20 years, I have taken field classes out to Ragged Mountain precisely because of the rich and delicate biodiversity out there. It's an excellent outdoor classroom for classes in ornithology, herpetology, geology, mammalogy. I've had them all out there. I've also been, for 15, 16 years, a four-age youth leader, and I take groups of little kids, 10 or 15 at a time, out to Ragged Mountain. We do nature study. I take them out there because I don't have to worry about a dog running up behind us or a bicycle coming past us as we're on the trail studying something. Now, I'm all for mountain biking. I'm an avid biker myself. I think we should be expanding our mountain biking trails, but I also think that it's of extreme value to have certain areas set aside as nature preserves for the quiet enjoyment of nature for passive recreation. If we are a community that values diversity, why do we want to homogenize all the activities on our parks? It is diverse to offer these different experiences over the wide range of our public lands. So let's expand our trails. We have hedgerow property with the possibility of 300 acres of Ragged Mountain next to it becoming a joint city-county park, an excellent opportunity for joint city-county cooperation. We have Greenway Expansion. We have Pretty Creek Expansion. Let's keep expanding trails, but let's not take away one of our natural areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Townsend.
I'm Elaine Townsend, 1404 Westwood. I live here in the city, and I am 61. I am an avid mountain biker, and I would like to be able to use these trails, they would be close to me so I could easily ride on them. We do stay on the trail, we don't go off the trails, and I've understood that going off the trail is where you damage your environment. So just wanted to say I vote for option E. I know it's getting late, and I'm going to keep it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Testa. Halfway through, everyone.
Hey, Dan Testa, I live at 101 Chisen Place. Along with what everyone else said, you know, I support shared use, and option E has an amendment that might create a loop around the reservoir. I think we all agree that everyone wants to preserve Ragged Mountain as a quiet and beautiful place, but I don't think that the question before you is one of destroying this area or altering it irrevocably. We're talking about a land use change that is very narrow in scope. You could have user groups in here who are calling for dirt bikes, or hunting, or organized paintball matches, but it's just some folks who want to ride bikes. And as has also been noted, Ragged Mountain has been significantly altered with earth-moving equipment, reshaping the landscape for years now. I support designated wilderness areas to preserve fragile ecosystems where it's appropriate, but I do not think a municipally-owned park with a man-made reservoir at the edge of a city and an interstate fit that criterion. I think the opponents of shared use at Ragged Mountain are basically asking you and the city to manage this property as wilderness. The only other point I'd like to make is please also consider that most of the trails to ride within and adjacent to Charlottesville, like Carter Mountain, or UVA's Observatory Hill, or the Rivana Trail, can have their access revoked at any time if the landowner wants. The trail-riding options in this town are actually... The trail-riding options in this town are actually resting on a fairly shaky foundation. As Councilman Fenwick noted, you can bike at all these different parks, but I live near Mead Park, I'm not going to ride my bike on the water slides or the jungle gym, because that's a park that's designed for a different type of user and a different type of visitor. So again, I support shared use, and please do consider what Councilor Gavin noted was possibly a loop that would sort of disperse the users and give everybody space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee Politis, I believe.
Hi, Lee Politis, I live in the county, and thank you all very much for taking time to listen to our comments. Dan Beaker just made some really wonderful points, other people as well, so I will edit my comments, and I will say that I want to be clear that I'm not advocating that cyclists and dog lovers not enjoy Ragged Mountain. I'm just asking them to leave their bikes and dogs at home when they visit, the same way that I would. I'm also a cyclist and also a dog lover. In doing so, they may experience this very unique sight without significantly disturbing and altering one of our only two natural areas. And here is where I won't remind you about the natural areas and about the available space for biking, but I will go on to say that when we consider all of our parks and natural areas as a whole, I believe it is optimal and important to offer residents a diversity of outdoor experiences, more active experiences in some places and more tranquil ones in others. So let's tailor our activities so they match the land, rather than forcing a one-size-fits-all model on what ideally would remain a natural area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leonard Wallawick.
Len Wallawick, 504 Rookwood Place in Charlottesville. This is over six miles. I'm 77 years old, and I'm a biker, but this is over six more miles of trails. There already exists 70 miles of biking trails. Why are we splitting hairs over six more miles when for 130 years, this has been a natural area? Not a park, not a recreation park, but a natural area. So why don't we keep it a natural area when in fact, just over the horizon, next month, there is a PAC meeting where some of you will attend, along with UVA and the county officials, and on the agenda is hedgerow, on how to develop it and how to possibly fund it. And there are other projects that you're considering with the county to develop more trails and more parks. So why are we going to let the genie out of the bottle right now when if we delayed this action until there is more of a macro feel for how to develop all the trails and all the parks and retain this natural area, one of two natural areas in this county? So I urge you not to approve shared usage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg Kastner.
Greg Kastner, 1603 Bruce Avenue, Charlottesville, Virginia. I urge you all to support the shared use proposal put forth by the Parks and Recreation Board, as well as the amendment for the full loop around. It is my belief that under the shared use proposal, hikers will have hiker-only trails to enjoy in peace and quiet, and the most environmentally sensitive areas will be restricted to hikers only. My feeling is that this current proposal is a win-win. All parties will get their space within Ragged Mountain to enjoy. Addressing the point earlier about bikers having all the easier-to-walk areas and hikers having all the steep areas, those are the things that the mountain bike community is thrilled to work with, the hiking community, to resolve those issues where we have the steeper areas, they have the easier-to-walk, or whatever is best for all parties involved. We're happy to work on those things if this is approved. Again, shared use is consistent with the city's, the Parks and Rec's mission to enhance equality for all. And finally, as Mr. Bellamy said earlier, Charlottesville needs to be inclusive, and allowing mountain bikers to this area is consistent with being inclusive, not exclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Malik Olson, or Douglas Malik Olson. So it looks like Hoffman is last name, Robin Hoffman, maybe?
Does look like Robin Hoffman.
Caroline Avenue? Okay. Patrick Norton.
I'm Patrick Norton, 100 Tripper Court in the city. I feel that Ragged Mountain is a community resource, and thus it should be available for all. I strongly support shared use at Ragged Mountain and strongly support option E with a complete loop to facilitate decrease in user conflicts. I'm a father of three young girls who love to mountain bike. They are currently involved in a mountain biking team, and I would just like to question exactly where these 70 miles of trails are that are very easily to be accessed, that I keep on hearing about tonight, because I've been a mountain biker since, in this city, since 2001, and I don't see a, somewhere I can bring my children to meet that need. I mean, I have to travel 20 to 30 minutes south to get to Walnut Creek Park, where there is a group of trails, or I have to travel maybe 30 minutes or 40 minutes to get up to Preddy Creek, where there's also trails that would be appropriate for my daughters. But there's nowhere I can go in town, and as a busy father, I would love to take time after work and to share this time with my daughters and to take them out mountain biking, but I just don't really have that ability to have a round trip that's going to cost me an hour and 10 minutes or an hour to do that. That takes too much time, I can't do this after work. So I really see that Ragged Mountain could fulfill a need for this community and really allow children to really experience the outdoors in a way that currently is not possible or accessible here in town. And also, I'd like to add that I would also support a loop that completes the route around the reservoir. When it comes up for resolution, I would like to see that part of the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Rachel Thielman.
Hi, I'm Rachel Thielman. I live at 100 Tripper Court here in the city of Charlottesville, and I just wanted to take a minute and thank you all for your work here tonight and express my support for shared use trails at Ragged Mountain. We've heard a lot from people that are talking about sort of forward-looking, how to best preserve this resource in our community, and I think that the more people are able to connect there and have an experience there that's significant, adults and children too, that's what drives stewardship, and that's what makes people feel invested in preserving resources in our community. And so I think that getting people out there is a huge step to preserving this area. And also, I have three children, and I agree, that was my husband. You know, I share his desire to be able to get our kids out, and not just my own kids. I work in child services, and I think that every kid benefits from opportunities to be outside, and I think there's some incredible work that's been done in this community. The folks at Blue Ridge Cyclery and Cambuk got together last weekend and spent hundreds of hours collectively building bikes for toy lifts so that kids in our community that wanted bikes would have them. And I think that that's the kind of generosity of spirit that is here in this community to help build trails and share trails, and that we can all work together and have a beautiful experience there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hackett.
Good evening. Eric Magrum, I'm at 1200 Montreux Avenue in Charlottesville. I'll be brief, because I think some people made more eloquent points than I can make this evening. I'd like to express my support for shared use, and again, I think a loop system around, as proposal E originally was planned, sure makes a lot of sense for dispersion, for the goals of what a large group of us want to do, which is have opportunities to take our kids in the woods here in town and ride in the woods. And, you know, as we've been through this process for a few years now and listened to community members in our conversations, and mostly civil discussions with a variety of community members who have different opinions and different biases on these issues here, the mountain bike club especially has recognized those issues, and we've had multiple discussions at board meetings about how do we do a better job of addressing user conflict? If that's an issue in the community, well then, we can do a better job at that. We can, we've ordered bike bells that we're going to be selling and giving away and putting at kiosks around town. So that was an issue, that people feel like that sometimes bikes come up on them unexpectedly on the Ravanna Trail, or there's issues as well. I ride in town every day, I commute every day, I ride all the time, I ride with my kid, I ride with all these kids in this community. There are no user conflicts. I've never, never seen a user conflict in this community. But that being said, we've recognized that as one of the concerns in the community through these discussions, and we've sat down and said, okay, can we make better signs and educate our group, educate the mountain bike club about these other issues that community members have brought up, and try to do a better job with our trail design, our trail building. It's a large part of what we do. It's a big part of what I love about this club, is the trail design and trail building that we do, having 70 people out there on a Sunday at O-Hill to do a reroute on a trail that needs some work, and then my son gets to go ride it later on. It's a great part of this community. So thanks again.
Thank you. Jean Hyatt.
Jean Hyatt, 1534 Rugby Avenue. I strongly support maintaining Ragged Mountain as a natural area and a unique habitat for a significant diversity of plant and wildlife species. As we have learned from the city-commissioned professional ecological study, no public property in the area matches Ragged Mountain in biological significance due to soil fertility, forest maturity, and diversity of plant and wildlife species. Why would we jeopardize this rare habitat with mountain bicycle travel, which can damage the land and vegetation, especially in wet conditions? And I would like to point out that others have mentioned too, it's, this is a natural area, not a park. Trails and increased human activity have a negative effect on the ecology of the forest. There are already plenty of trails that are not in pristine natural areas where bicyclists can travel. We have 70 miles, people keep questioning that, dedicated towards mountain biking, and soon there will be planning underway to provide mountain biking trails in the county's new hedgerow property, which is intended for multiple use. Now, I'll mention, my husband does mountain biking all the time, and there's plenty of biking near our neighborhood, Walker School, and on the Ravanna Trail, and he also opposes shared use on Ragged Mountain. City has preserved this area for 130 years with 110 years of restricted access, and the last 20 years as a natural area with passive recreation for walking, hiking, and fishing. That is quite a lot of activity already. In the last two and a half years, there has been a sharp increase in the number of walkers and hikers in Ragged Mountain. I ask that you preserve this pristine and unique natural area that we are so fortunate to have nearby, and allow people in our community to enjoy it while hiking and fishing.
Thank you. Sophie Webb.
Sheila.
John Lewis.
John Lewis, 100 West Park Drive, McCounty. I support shared, non-motorized use of trails and a loop system around the reservoir for shared use. I also ask to not lock down a specific trail design into an ordinance that removes the flexibility of the Parks and Rec Department to work with experts to design an optimal trail system that is sustainable and can accommodate multiple use types to reduce trail conflict and environmental impact. Natural area is a name we came up with for a place that used to be farmed. Twice, large sections have been clear-cut to accommodate the dams and the reservoir, has a highway running through it, and is bordered by farms and suburban neighborhoods, and is already impacted by invasives. Other natural areas are Ivy Creek, and not mentioned, Arrowhead, the Arrowhead property in the county, which is specifically designated for a natural area and limited use, which I support remaining natural areas with limited use. There's no reason this natural area at Ragged Mountain cannot support multiple non-motorized uses of its trails when there is no evidence that one form of use is better or worse than others to surrounding flora and fauna, nor should you make decisions on usage based on the fear of a few bad apples, which exist for every use type. Are 99% of responsible bikers worse than a large group of young hikers, running around the trails and going off-trail, or a large family of picnickers? Ragged Mountain is a beautiful place that should not be kept exclusive in use types to a vocal minority who fear overuse and environmental degradation. It's a difficult-to-get-to location. Single-lane access and small parking lot will keep usage limited. Environmental degradation happens with poor trail design and irresponsible users, regardless of how they choose to enjoy beautiful space. Like that, we call Ragged Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Cook.
I live at 927 Henry Avenue, and I just wanted to say very quickly, I support mixed-use Ragged Mountain natural area. I've lived in the city, went to college, I've come back about 10 years now, I have two small boys. We use the Ravanna Trail, the Parks Trails for running, hiking, biking, anything that's allowed. We have never had a conflict. It's one of the reasons I moved back to Charlottesville from the west coast, because that existed in the city. And from my perspective, we've never had conflict, more is better. I would love to have more opportunities to take my kids for a ride without hopping in the car to drive somewhere to go for a ride. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Elliot Harding.
I'll be the shortest. I signed the wrong list. I thought it was for public matters afterwards. And I messed up and did that for my friend Candace Johnson, too, so keep that in mind.
All right. You got extra points. Nicolai Brown.
Nicolai Brown, 1109 Rayon Street in the city, and I have a comment in support of allowing biking at Ragged Mountain. When Charlottesville provides natural areas for recreational experiences, that improves Charlottesville's quality-of-life rating. If Charlottesville wants to continue to grow, to attract new businesses, to have current businesses expand, it needs to concentrate on quality-of-life opportunities. It needs to be a place that people want to live. Having an inclusive park so close to town is an important part of Charlottesville's economic growth plan. I hope you choose to allow shared use at Ragged Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Johnson.
I did the same thing.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. George Urban.
I'm on the wrong list as well.
Okay. All right, so we've got, okay, you all are okay there, you can talk, you know that you can talk afterward, okay. Anyone else who signed up before? Okay. Okay, well, come down quickly, because we've... Is there anybody else? We'll make sure we get through everybody. Okay, just please say your name.
Scott Bandi, 1639 Cherry Avenue.
Thank you.
If you summarize this by its most rudimentary content, if you leave the Ragged Mountain natural area to be, you are supporting sustainability. If you should go with opening this and expanding it to the mountain bikes, you are going in the direction of more development.
Thank you. Okay, let's rock 'em, sock 'em.
Rebecca Quinn, 1044 Street here in the city. I trust you read the Planning Commission's transcript. Neither city staff nor the chair of the Parks and Recreation Board mentioned John Santowski, who's on the Planning Commission, who made a really reasonable and good case for postponing a decision until, as some other speakers have mentioned, the county gets further along with hedgerow, which I understand was specifically set aside with uses inclusive of biking. Ragged Mountain natural area was not. So you can make this decision in a couple of years, but suppose hedgerow gets developed for bikes and the access issue is addressed, you can't undo this decision. for bikes and the access issue is addressed, you can't undo this decision quite so easily. So, what's the rush? You know, 130 years, you can wait. You can wait until we know what's available right next door. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Who, who else? Let's go. Well, we, we do. We need to keep the records. We're ready as well.
Yeah, we need the record.
But you can talk while you're writing.
But anyone else who signed up should, who's next should, should come up.
Catherine Hagan, 1603 Bruce Avenue in Charlottesville. I am not a mountain biker. I've done it once, probably won't do it again. But I do hike and have hiked regularly in the Charlottesville area. And I've never had any conflicts with any other user groups, including the mountain bikers. So, I fully support the shared use proposal and would urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rolf Braun, 1120 East I Street. I support the proposal for shared use, for shared non-motorized use of the area. I heard, I heard some people earlier say, well, the area is pristine and kind of implying that if you had bikes there, it wouldn't be pristine. And I think that's a fallacy and there's some interesting history behind that. But I think, I, I, I think the proposal is allowing shared use with bikes on the assumption that, that you can have that in a relatively pristine area if it's compatible with the land. And I think they studied the land and that's, and that's something that, that is compatible in much of this area. Furthermore, regarding the loop, I would support that as well. But they need to take into consideration some of the sensitive areas toward the southwest side of the park and work with, work with the Parks Department and the landscapers to determine, to determine where and how that should work. Regarding the county, my understanding is the title of the properties, I might be wrong, the title of the property is owned by the city. So, the county's, the county's role in this, other than just being good neighbors, is their ordinance govern, would govern it like, almost like it's a piece of private property, whereas it's the city that really determines the rules of use. So, I don't see a reason to delay this because of the county when, when legally it's, it seems the city really, the city is really who anyone would defer to with authority over it.
Thanks.
Hi there. Joe Hoskins, 864 Locust Avenue. I support the shared multi-use trail system and also the amendment to allow for a loop on the south side. And my personal investment in this is that I coach a mountain bike team here in Charlottesville that serves youth and middle school kids. Some of the parents of the team have spoken tonight. We really don't have a place to go that's got quality trails that are accessible for, for kids. Ragged Mountain has that. We actually were somewhat involved in, part of our, our mandate as a team is to do leadership and stewardship and trail building opportunities for the kids. And we actually went out to Ragged Mountain and did our own kind of funny ecological survey. But one of the kids during that actually pointed to some of the trails that had been built there and mentioned that, you know, why are those trails so eroded? Why are those trails in such poor condition? And the response from me was, you know, they just weren't laid out well. They weren't managed well. The stewardship of that land was not carried out responsibly. I think you have a lot of experience in the, in the community here, specifically in the mountain bike community, to see that those trails are responsibly managed. I hope you take us up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Bruin. Bicycling, hiking, 1449 Butler Street. Fishing, birding, contemplative, quiet, all of these things can be accommodated in Ragged Mountain. If this is in fact a shared recreational space, then the voice of the community at large across its diverse spectrum should be heard. And this really does entail allowing people to get into nature. And we've heard tonight so many different ways that people see that that can be accomplished. I am for shared use. I am for E around, and I am for everyone enjoying this quiet contemplative activity in however they can make this happen. And in my stance, it's running, it's mountain biking, it's hiking, it's walking with kids, it's looking at moss and lichen and flora and fauna. And biking's great. It doesn't hurt anything. If you haven't been out there, get out there. And then when you can bike out there, give it a try, too. Thank you much for your consideration.
Thank you. Smith.
DeeDee Smith, 2652 Jefferson Park Circle. More than 100 years ago, the city bought this land in two installments. And the first things they did was to basically eliminate the human activity. And they did it for water quality because they, they understood and they bought the whole watershed. That, that is something that, it went, actually, when the land around Sugar Hollow was bought, they bought a huge chunk of the watershed. That was the last time in all of our five reservoir buildings that the city or the county bought any land other than what they needed. This is, these are the only two reservoirs that remain clean and they're our oldest ones. To, I believe these, I believe the, the mountain bikers make wonderful trails and they maintain wonderful trails, but we're talking about a reservoir that needs to last 100 or more years, more. And you, it is your responsibility to take the long view and to say, how do we protect, like our forefathers did? And they did it for us. And it is our responsibility to look forward. It's a very, very small watershed. And anything that happens on that land will immediately go into this big stagnant pool of water. There is no outflow. And it's going to just keep on coming in. And it's really when the drought happens, that's when you have to worry. It's not when it's full of 1.5 billion gallons of water, it's when it goes down. It's five feet down now and it's conical and it's gonna start accelerating if we do not start getting any kind of significant rain. And that's when the drought problems happen. So, I ask you to take the long view. Just, one, one more point is if you do allow more uses than hiking, put the runners with the bikes because that has the same impact that bikes do in terms of conflict with walkers. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. So, the public hearing, we're gonna close the public hearing comment. You just, you stood up and you did one more. We've, we've, we had multiple signup periods. So, how about, but sir, if you, you just, I saw you. Okay. So, let's have you be the last one, but we've been.
Thank you.
Glad they let you out.
I'm sorry to be out of order. There are still names on the list. I signed up.
Oh, there are? Okay. All right. How many others are there? Are there?
I know. I'm on the list.
Are there any others?
Will Sanford, 1581 Thorn Ridge Way, Charlottesville, Virginia. That's in the county, but I'm on the board of the Charlottesville Area Mountain Bike Club. Tonight, we've heard, heard some good stories. Ivy Creek being the only natural area that would be left if Ragged was to allow multi-use. There's Fernbrook, owned and managed by Nature Conservancy, doesn't allow any bikes. That's located here in the county. Shenandoah National Park is over 14,000 acres in the county, some of it with wilderness designation. And there's the new Arrowhead Farm property. Chris Gist mentioned that the 20, that the 29 parks in the city don't allow quality mountain bike experiences. I agree. We've heard that cars, that bikes are wider than cars and wouldn't work well on the road. That's a nice whopper. We've heard people complain about not having a quiet space if multi-use is allowed. But current plans allow single-use areas on the, on the plan there, which would be good for quiet interpretive uses. Those quiet areas would remain. Let's see. I agree with John Lewis. Don't lock staff into design with an ordinance, just pass the multi-use aspect of it and let the professionals deal with the trail design. I've seen landscape architects mess up trail design really bad. I would recommend Professional Trail Builder Association criteria over and above a landscape architect. We heard mountain bikes equal more development. That's patently false. We're talking about different uses on the same trails. The development is the same. And of course, DeeDee Smith brought up the watershed issue and the water quality. We pump dirty water from one reservoir into this reservoir that we're talking about at Ragged Mountain. It's, it's treated by the Ravanna Water and Service Authority. They have publicly stated that there is no issue with water quality. So, what's the point in bringing it up? So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. It's been a long night. Thank you for the opportunity. Al Inigo, 2509 Cary Lane. I want to echo Will's point. As he said, the Ravanna Water and Sewer Authority is on public record as saying that they have no problem with mountain bikes being out there. They're the experts. I urge you also to please follow the Park Advisory Board's recommendations as well as the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. They unanimously approved and supported biking out here. And it's important to keep in mind that, that the biking community is here supporting shared use. There's been a lot of talk about the bikes possibly interfering with the hikers' experience, but they will have hiker-only loops. Please understand, we're not here asking that the hikers be excluded as they are asking for us to be excluded. We are asking for shared use, as a number of speakers have said. We live in a wonderful community. The trail users, for the most part, work with each other. We are sensitive to hikers' issues and we want to work with them. So, please vote in favor of the shared use. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are gonna move forward to deliberate on this matter. We have 20 minutes allocated to this on our agenda. We have two other items on the agenda tonight. Just so everybody knows, this was a packed year-end meeting and we, so I'm gonna, we will probably go over this. I'm gonna, we're gonna, but I'm gonna try to move it along. I would like to do this as a first cut. We do, there's a motion that's been prepared, but before we get there, I'd like to use my discretion as chair to sort of do an informal cut at any discussion or opinions anybody has about this here that might make our deliberations more efficient before we get to the motion. So, is there any thing that anybody wants to say about where they are on this? I do, for instance.
I was gonna make a motion, but.
Okay. Well.
Generally, the, according to Robert's rules, we do.
I'm, I'm well aware, but the chair can also take a poll first before you get to a motion. So, I'm asking if anybody has anything they want to get off their chest before we have a motion steer the debate.
May I ask a question, though? That if we get something off our chest and have the motion, we still need to have ability to make comment?
Yes. So, we still have that.
So, when do we do the comment? I think it's usually after you've made the motion.
You can do it after the motion. That's correct. Okay. So, I'm, are you gonna be doing Ms. Galvins or the motion that we got earlier?
I'm just talking about the rest, the ordinance itself.
Okay.
There's two parts.
So, the ordinance is gonna go for it. Okay. Great. All right. So, let's do that.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as worded in our, let's see it. I was getting so into the public comment, I didn't put it up in front of me. The shared use ordinance as, as appears in our, so many pages of our document. Is that enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion as included in materials.
Here it is. To add a new article, section 1821 through 1827 to chapter 18, Parks and Recreation of the Code of the City of Charlottesville, to, as amended, entitled Ragged Mountain Natural Area Rules of Use to Include Shared Use in Mountain Biking. And to my great heartache, not dogs.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Are there questions or comments on this motion?
I'm happy to just kind of offer why I did it and then I'll sit back and listen and shut up. So, and I, I don't have a big prepared statement or anything. I have been, you know, I was on the council that, that considered this the first time and that voted in principle to have shared use. And so, we then commissioned the Parks Board to go ahead and, and really consider it and ask lots of people. And I don't know, do you, do you know how many people participated in public hearings in the process? Lots? That's a technical term of, of art. So, a lot of people have participated in this and as you see, a lot of people participated tonight. And what I am touched by in hearing at the, the one hearing that I went to and tonight is what you all share, which is a real love of this area. And it, it moves me and it, it just makes me think that, that as Ms. Smith said, that our, our forebears did a real favor to this community by, by thinking ahead, by thinking big and, and creating this space, you know, for our water supply and ultimately for our, for our way of life. And so, I, I just, I wanted to, to say before we get into the parts where we don't agree, that I think we all do agree that, that nature is wonderful, that children should be in nature. I think if, if we really thought that, that it should be a pristine wilderness area, we would say there should be no children, right? Because that would keep people out of it. We would say that we should fence it off and not let anyone in because that would make it pristine. And then the little ground nesting birds, who we all adore, would have free rein. But I think we understand that for people to really understand the value of wilderness and to want to protect it and to continue to be active in its, in its care, we need to let people out into the wilderness. We need to teach people how to be in wilderness in ways that are respectful. And I think that the mountain bike community in this community is one of the greater teachers of that particular attitude toward wilderness. And I really appreciate the work that they've done. This was not declared a natural area until 1997. Actually, Kay Slaughter, who was here before, is she still here? Was, was either on council or was mayor at the time and was a pivotal part of that. Before that, it was indeed bought as a reservoir and it was just kind of held in reserve for the day that we might need it as a reservoir. And that day came also while I was on council. And we voted to increase the size of the reservoir so it would, it would fit our 50-year water plan. And there's been a great deal of construction up there. We tried to do as little as possible so that there's a possibility of expanding it later so that it's a smaller footprint now. But one of the reasons we did it that way was so that people could walk the whole trail around and then plan that pontoon across so that it would be an area that people could actually take advantage of. So, and I do understand that the issue with dogs, for me, that the issue with dogs is, is less that dogs poop, which in a water supply area, actually, we've been told is not a big concern for the water supply, at least not to the people who do water supplies. But there, a lot of people, as we know, even in areas where dogs are required on leashes, take dogs off leashes. As a person who walks small dogs, I have been charged at by people's dogs who were not on leash and, and that's not an experience we want there. But for all of those reasons, I think that a mixed-use approach is good. I do support the trail all the way around. I think it would reduce the number of times that bikes go past pedestrians. I do support areas that are pedestrian-only. And I, I actually was intrigued by the idea of having runners and bikes on the same trails and not on the, on the pedestrian-only trails. And so, and, and I would be interested in ultimately, not in this ordinance, but looking at when the hedgerow property is opened, look back at the, the kind of distribution of uses, not the, whether it's mixed use or not, to see if that still makes sense when we have more bike trails. But for now, I will stop. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd love to be able to make my comments and my rationale known as to why I do support the shared use version of the ordinance. And I've got three main points to make. And the first one, there's really nothing in, in, in the history of town and city building that requires a reservoir to be in a natural area. In fact, many cities, many great cities have reservoirs that are major, major recreation centers. I'm thinking about the Fresh Pond Reservoir in, in Cambridge, Massachusetts, or the Three Ponds, and Brookline, Mass. The, the very own DW Field Parkway, which was the reservoir in the city of Brockton, where I grew up. And it was designed by Frederick La Olmsted, an architect, landscape architect, who seriously believed in the, in the, in the spirituality and the rejuvenation that parks can provide. But that is where I biked and jogged and fished and boated, had picnics and hunted for pollywogs and any number of turtles.
For what?
To satisfy.
Pollywogs?
Tadpoles.
Sorry.
Oh, that's a, a, a.
I was writing in there.
Show-off version of a tadpole.
It's a technical term from New England.
So, pollywogs. And so, I have a great understanding and affection for these areas and it was a reservoir. And I can, I've worked really hard to say that correctly, given my New England accent. Second, the Ragged Mountain, Mountain Reservoir is a natural bowl, which means it is, it is a very good source, a, a good place to store our water. And it does. good source, a good place to store our water, and it doesn't get built up with silt, as would a river that's dammed. It's a great source of water with an exemplary water treatment process called granular activated carbon filtration that precludes the use of chloramines. So human activity around this reservoir will not harm the water, and it will not harm our water supply. It was also... This reservoir was a $30 million capital project, built and paid for via a joint agreement between the county, city, and the Rivanna Water and Sewer Authority. It's a marvel of engineering, and it's a marvel of regional cooperation. Something that we've been talking about tonight is somehow we're not doing, because we're voting on this issue tonight. For all these reasons, the Ragged Mountain Natural Area is a public urban amenity. Third, it is this side of 64, and 64 is very busy and loud. And it also does mean that it cannot be traversed by bicycle or walking. It is within walking and biking distance of neighborhoods of all income levels in the city. It is not remote, and that is a very good thing, especially in this day and age when one in five of our fifth graders in Charlottesville city schools is obese. We need to do everything we can to make active living fun and experience in nature rewarding and frequent. That's why I support the Boys and Girls Club cycling program that currently holds practice for two teams, over 40 kids in each one, on local paved trails at Riverview Park and the John Warner Parkway. While those are great options, having access to safe, beginner-friendly trails within the city limits isn't available now. I would also like to say that having these... The Boys and Girls Club programs close to Ragged Mountain, and these trails will mean that they will change their program to accommodate that. These kids, they have a program in Southwood and a program in Cherry Avenue. According to the 2015 Annual Report, 59% of club members qualify for the free and reduced price school lunch program. So in sum, it is, again, a public resource that's accessible and attractive to all citizens of all ages and socioeconomic groups, which means providing for hikers, joggers, and cyclists alike. It's what the council established over a year ago. And the last thing I'll say is, I know that this is painful for many of my friends, many of you who are mentors of mine. I hope this doesn't damage relationships, but I must make a decision based on what I understand to be the public common good.
I will... Don't mind if I... I'll make a comment. So I'm on three minutes as well. I just want to say to everybody, for this concern about public hearings and so on, we do this... We didn't have to do a public hearing tonight. We had 40 people come. We've done this on deer, guns, memorials this year. We've held voluntary public hearings during the meetings to hear from a ton of people, which we did tonight. I think it's very healthy. I'm in support of this ordinance enthusiastically. It is not without reservations or sympathy for those who are going to be disappointed by this. I do also have a lot of mentors and people I care a lot about who are on the other side of this. There are a lot of issues like that in a city like this, where there are people of good faith who are gonna disagree. We saw that here tonight. Everybody who spoke was a good person. People had different opinions. I'm approaching this with four different criteria, which, you know, help guide me, I guess, in some of these policy. When there's not a really powerful reason not to act, I think we should act. This is based on a lot of concern I heard running for this office about people saying, "Why aren't you guys acting on this, that, or the other thing?" They were... They would go through Siri Autumn concerns. And in this one, it doesn't seem to me that there's a crucial reason not to act in front of us. Second is the whole-city approach. I ran for this office on an idea of one Charlottesville, which really meant to me thinking, especially in really difficult issues, for what would be the right answer for the whole city. That is tough. It's hard. But in this one, I agree with the logic that we heard at the end there, which is an inclusive approach, particularly if Parks and Rec can be charged with balancing it, which I think they can, and I think they are more than capable to do that, especially given the amount of public intake that they have heard on this, that they can come up with the best position to balance the competing interests and goals in a way that I'm not capable to do. I thought that was a very interesting point, that mountain bikers that Ms. Smith made, on the same trails as hikers actually would do less damage to the conservation interests here. But again, I'm a layperson lawyer, so I trust the experts at Park and Rec. Balance. Third principle, I think that in general, when there are competing interests, if we can come up with a balanced answer, that will often end up at the best outcome. And that means it's very tempting to slip into symbolic victories or stark positions on one thing or the other, but I think with this, I'm hearing that there is a balanced outcome that will be of benefit, even though some people will be disappointed or frightened by the outcome. I think that we will end up balancing it. And the fourth is values. I have met with people on both sides of this. I totally believe that the mountain bikers are very ardent conservationists. I think that you all take this deeply, seriously, and gravely, and I think that you have zero interest in reducing the beauty, or the diversity, or the ecology of this. And I agree. I don't think that biking in and of itself on trails is all that, is dangerous in the slightest. So that's how I end up supporting the ordinance.
Good job on the three minutes.
It's not the areas the clock is in front of them.
If you can't do, teach, you know, or practice, whatever. Any others?
Well, I... I'll just cut to the chase. I believe there's value in having a natural area. This is a fairly recent way that our country has approached the environmental stewardship we have. It used to be we didn't really care about that. There were not that many people around. And when there got to be a lot of people, we could just move west, and there would be less people out there. We did not worry about setting areas aside. We did not worry about the flora and the fauna that we would disrupt with a lot of people in one spot. So the fact that this was made a natural area in 1997, I think the date was, to me, is great, because it shows that we are progressing, that we understand the value of these places. Couple things I'd like to mention. It's about my perception of mountain biking, not biking, but mountain biking out in the woods like this. I have never seen a group of mountain bikers glide across the land like a silent cloud. They're having fun. They're calling to each other. They're spinning their wheels. I've seen it any number of times. This is a watershed area. This is a reservoir for our water, for the city, and probably for future development on the western side of the county, which nobody really wants to talk about. So that's just how I have seen mountain bikers. I'm not talking about bikers. I am concerned about acting prematurely when we have not nailed this down with the county. We have several things with the county that are very important right now, court's co-location, among other things, historical markers around town, and people get very upset when we don't have good coordination between city-county. This is, to me, a very simple thing that can be taken care of before we go any further. And there is a really... Well, there's a chance that this is not going to be acceptable to the county, and they could probably take it the wrong way. And I would ask people to realize that. I think that would just about explain my position.
Thank you. Thank you. So, almost three minutes. You did a good job. Now you're taking up my time. So I'll try to be as quick and succinct as I can. Hearing the arguments tonight, and I was actually keeping the tally, just based on my calculations, which I compare with our city manager and my math... I guess the gentleman earlier said I wasn't a math teacher, which, he's right. So I had 21 for, and I had 18... Twenty-one for shared use, and then 18 in regards to it staying the same. I have no qualms with admitting that prior to coming into the meeting tonight, I was all for actually looking at how we can preserve this gem for our community. I've heard several different arguments on both sides about different ways in which we could utilize it. And what really came to mind for me was hearing from individuals from our elder population who oftentimes don't use social media to get the word out, to come down to the meetings, who oftentimes don't galvanize people the same way. But what I heard from them continuously, either through emails or being stopped at the grocery store, or all these other places, is that this is one of the last places where they felt they could actually go and get some quote-unquote peace and quiet. And I thought that was really important to hear. While, again, we've heard very strong arguments for shared usage, which I don't have any qualms with and I understand exactly where they're coming from, I will, again, admit that I was firm in my support for, again, maintaining this park as a gem for our community. But being that it already appears that we have three individuals, three of our colleagues, who want us to move forward, what I'd like to see us do now is figure out how we can compromise. And I know that some individuals have discussed option E, and talking about... Other people have said, "Well, maybe we can just build something around the park, and then we... Some people won't be interrupted." What I want to see us do now is ensure on both sides, and I know you won't be able to please 100% of the people 100% of the time, but how do we make sure that this population still feels as if they aren't just being quote-unquote kicked to the curb, or that people are trying to change the landscape of something that they've been able to enjoy for literally generations? And I think that's important. We cannot just look at these people who feel as if this peace and quiet, this peaceful place... Excuse me. This quiet place in which they often get a chance to take advantage of, walk, clear their mind, or whatever their cares may be, that they are not just forgotten. And while I'm a huge advocate for young people, which everyone knows, and I saw... I don't know which one of you sent me the email earlier today who said, "You see the kids at the Boys and Girls Club like this. You like kids. You should go with shared use." You almost got me. I think it might have been the cool beard guy. I'm not sure. I think it was you. But while, again, I unequivocally understand that perspective, I just want us to find a compromise for both sides, because it seems as if we have the need to move forward. So let's make sure we do this right. Let's try to preserve what we can for those in need, and then, again, still move forward in the best way possible for all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I think we're ready for a vote. Mr. Mayor, this is the first of two readings. First and second, so we...
And I think that, you know, I think a lot of those questions about trail usage and kind of guidance about that are a separate issue. So, yeah, I think that's... I really appreciate Mr. Bellamy's thoughts on that.
So we've had a first and a second, so we're moving ahead to the second reading, which will happen next meeting, on the 19th, where we had... Where we'll have the vote. So, but we have... And I think we've had a good airing of opinion on it so far.
So, Mr. Mayor, by our next meeting, it would, I think, then be beneficial for all of us before then, tonight, is to... I've prepared a resolution that provides some of the direction that we've discussed tonight about creating that loop trail that affects the Ragged Mountain Draft Trail Use Plan, not the ordinance. This is just the plan. And Councilor Zakos has also talked about having a checkpoint when the hedgerow comes online to perhaps take an assessment of how the users are making use of all the trails and allow for a revision, perhaps. But I'm gonna let that be something that Councilor Zakos can firmly or more clearly elaborate on. But I would like to offer this and give it to staff to look at, and then incorporate into what they propose to give to us in terms of next steps on how to incorporate some of these ideas into the final trail plan, which then would become something that I guess council would have to vote on at some point, correct?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily? But just... This is just to give clear direction from council that we do want this loop trail.
Is this for tonight, or this be for...
This would be for next...
Two weeks.
But this is bringing it up tonight for consideration and getting staff review for then our vote on the 19th.
Do we want to read it now, or do...
I think that'd be a good idea.
So it's pretty simple and straightforward. The resolution simply reads, "The Shosso City Council hereby directs staff to amend the Ragged Mountain Trail Draft Use Plan that's dated 11/116 as follows and illustrated on the attached revised map..."
It should be dated 11/19.
But the map...
No, you're right. You're right. Take it back.
In the draft map in the memo is dated November 1/16 as follows and illustrated on the attached revised map, "To be in keeping with good trail planning practice that disperses faster-moving visitors away from the trailhead as quickly as possible. Those two points are: one, with regards to the central area just north of the parking area trailhead, change the usage designation on this loop trail to hiker-only; and two, with regards to the southern area near the floating bridge, change the use on the trail to bikes permitted." And that... Those two points are identified on the map. So this is for staff to review, and it's also to provide some direction that a majority of council or not are very interested in incorporating these conditions.
Okay. Just briefly, after reviewing that, I think the direction's very clear.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And the thing that I would like to ask staff to consider as well, perhaps as a part of that same resolution for next time, and I can give you the language for this as well, and I worded it kind of a potential way to say it, that furthermore, council would direct that upon the opening of the county park currently known as the Hedgerow Property, which will include mixed-use trails, the city reevaluate the distribution ratio of shared uses in the Ragged Mountain Natural Area as depicted in that trail plan, to determine if they are still appropriate. So as that gets done, when there are more bike trails around, to see if... How it's working. And that the reevaluation can... Shall include but not be limited to user surveys conducted at the Ragged Mountain area to assess user experience and satisfaction. I just think at some point, it's good to kind of come back and see how it's working.
And I agree with that.
And in the nature of this kind of open polling discussion, I support these as well. So that's... General, Mr. Bellamy, are you... Is this in your compromise? It's not a vote.
What else would you suggest?
If you have anything you want to add. This will be prepared by staff. Okay, we're fine. All right. Mr. Fenwick, any... You're okay?
I'd like to... One of you.
Or not okay? Okay.
I mean, I'm... I have to do it.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we are...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone?
And thank you.
Thank you, all for... Everyone for showing up. All right, we're moving on to Water Street Corridor amendments.
Stay, please, stay.
No, don't. Go home, go to bed.
No.
Kiss your children.
All right.
Thank you.
This is an ordinance, first of two readings. We'll be doing a motion and a second, which I will remember this time. We'll be having Brian Daley, Brian Aluska, presenting.
One of the Bryans?
Both. Where... Oh, yeah, yes. Wait, don't I have both? Aren't you?
No.
Oh, this is a typo. Sorry, we had both. Yeah, it's just the Water Street Corridor. I don't think Brian Daley worked on that. Well, it's just... They'll just do what I'm told.
Blame page.
Sorry. All right. Mr. Aluska.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a zoning text amendment for the Water Street Corridor. There are two sections that we are looking at tonight. The setback regulations along Ridge Street, as they apply to the Water Street Corridor, which... And the step-back regulations adjacent to the South Street Mixed-Use District. It should be noted that these changes apply to a single property within the corridor 100... With 100 West... Where's it? 100 Ridge Street, which is the Midway Manor property, better known as the Midway Manor[1733.12] as the Midway Manor property. The Planning Commission reviewed these changes, these proposed changes, on November 9th. They recommended that a 25-foot setback be passed on Ridge Street, the Ridge Street frontage along the Water Street Corridor, and that an additional step-back along the South Street Corridor Mixed Use District be imposed. So currently, there's a 10-foot setback along that line that was passed earlier this year, and the Planning Commission recommended that after 45 feet in height, there be an additional 15-foot step-back, which is in line with some of the step-backs that are currently applicable on the property. So with that, these were initiated by the Planning Commission in the summer. As I think you are aware, the owner of the property has stated their opposition to these changes. They do, I believe they are in favor of the change, of the recommended, staff recommended change on Ridge Street, which was a 10-foot minimum, 20-foot maximum, as opposed to a 25-foot minimum.
Excuse me, just to make sure, they are okay with that? At first, I thought they wanted a 15-foot.
I guess they can do 15.
They can do.
They could do 15, yeah.
But 10 to 20 is okay.
Currently, there's a bill-to line, there's a bill-to line, and I believe there was some question of where should that setback line be? And so with that, I'll take any questions, just as long as my voice holds up.
Can you real quick outline the difference between what the Planning Commission approved and the changes, real quick?
So, the ordinance in your packet reflects the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The main debate here was over the setback along Ridge Street on the property. So the Tree Commission wrote a letter to the Planning Commission requesting that they initiate a change to require 25, a 25-foot setback. When staff reviewed that, we ultimately recommended the setback that's currently applicable across Ridge Street, which is a minimum of 10, maximum of 20. So that's the main difference between our recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation. The other thing, there was a wording change in the ordinance that's different from what the Planning Commission saw regarding the South Street step-back. And that came as a result of a question from the owner of the property, which said that this is kind of an unclear thing in our code, which is if I have a 10-foot setback and then a 15-foot step-back after 45 feet in height, what if my building is stepped back, set back further than 10 feet? Does that 15-foot step-back still apply at 45 feet, even if my building is 25 feet from the property line? So the way the ordinance is written now, as that building pulls back from the required setback, that step-back would shrink. So they could do a 10-foot setback, go up 45 feet in height, and then step back an additional 15 feet, they could go back 25 feet and just do a straight building wall of 70 feet. But either way, before, when they get above 45 feet in height, they should be 25 feet back from the property line. And 45 feet is the maximum height in South Street, so that's where that number is being pulled from.
I do have a question. Is, so we're on that adjacent line with South Street District and the Midway Manor property, so that is a 10-foot side setback, and that's a minimum, is there a maximum side setback?
There is no maximum under.
So that is a little bit of a concern for me, because that means it could be just a big parking lot there?
The setback would apply to any structures, and I believe there's a landscaping requirement, but I mean, there's parking there now, I believe, and that's where the entryway is, and I believe there's some parking there now, so they could do that. The code is written so that the buildings would be pulled to the property lines and parking would be in the rear, and that is the side and rear of the property. So, yeah.
Okay, I just was curious, so, all right, that explains that one. And the other concern I had, because I was a little confused about when trees were required, and that it seemed that it was a function of the setback depth, that you would be required to have trees if your setback was, what, 10 feet or more?
10 or more, yeah.
So I asked some questions earlier about could we then change the setback requirement along Water Street so that it would require trees? And I'm specifically talking about the 25% percentage of the frontage that currently has a 5-foot setback from the property line, and if we made that a 10-foot setback, trees would be required for 25% of the frontage.
I believe my answer is going to be what Mr. Brown is going to say, which is.
Can we do that?
The Water Street setback was not, it was not advertised at all.
Was not part of this discussion? Oh, okay, all right.
And the Ridge Street setback, under this proposal, is 25 feet, is that correct?
That is the, that is the way the ordinance is written, and it was written that way specifically.
Okay, so really, the only thing we can talk about is that?
Is Ridge Street.
Okay.
And I want to make a note, we're talking about the South Street frontage, this property does not front on Water Street.
Okay, all right, that answers.
I know what you're, what you mean there, though.
This is for another discussion with the zoning rewrite.
Correct. And it's advertised at 25, so you could do less than that, but you couldn't increase it beyond 25, I believe. That was the reason why it was drafted the way it was, was so that it could be reduced if that was the will of the council.
But not extended.
But not extended beyond 25, yes.
But, Mr. Mayor, could I interject just one thing here? There was, I just want to make sure we're all working from the same ordinance. My colleague, Ms. Robertson, sent to council a slightly revised version last Thursday, which just clarified what she felt was a conflict. The ordinance, unlike what's posted online, there's no paragraph four, and that has been incorporated into 34-743B with the sentence, the last sentence, which is, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, a required yard of 25 feet minimum shall be provided along the entire length of any lot line having any frontage on Ridge Street." It's my understanding that's consistent with the recommendation of the Planning Commission as informed by the Tree Commission.
Right.
However, then staff, in keeping with the West Main East District encouraged or recommended a 10 to 20 foot, okay.
And you can certainly go to that on first reading, if you like.
And we can go to that, we can go to that, okay.
And I have a question about that particular thing before you go on, because we got a letter saying that the Tree Commission's recommendation, actually while they were asking for 25, said that 15 would be fine, which is between 10 and 20, so I'm wondering why the Planning Commission felt it needed to really kind of go against the staff recommendation on that.
The, to summarize the Planning Commission's discussion as best I can.
I mean, I know your staff, and I'm asking you to say why.
Yeah, they were, yeah, speaking on their behalf is something a little dangerous, but I believe what I heard was that there was a lot of concern about the presence of street trees, the ability of those street trees to thrive in that environment and shade the pedestrian environment along Ridge Street, and also the historical context of the site, that it used to be a school, and there, that building has always been kind of set back further, and so that was raised, I know, early, early in discussions, I don't know if that was, if that was said again, and the public, they kind of all blend together in my mind right now.
In the pictures we've seen of that school, it looks like it's right there, like right up to the street with a little dip, it's not 25 feet back, is it?
Yeah, and so I don't know, I don't know where that, I don't know where the line would have been, we'd have to, you know, pull up probably the same ordinance.
It's the photographs that look a lot closer than 25 feet.
And it may have been a reflection of the height.
Could have been, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So I.
Other questions?
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance with a minor modification, and I'm hoping I'm picking the right one to modify, but it would be on, under section 34-743B setbacks, instead of 25 feet, I would say 20 feet. Am I saying that right? To match the West Main East. The goal is to keep that street consistent on both sides. Am I amending this correctly for that intention?
Is, are you talking about the very last notwithstanding sentence?
Uh-uh, and B. Yeah, that's the sentence I'm looking at.
And you would be changing.
Along the entire length of any lot line having any frontage on Ridge Street. I think I'm in the right place. That, that would be it, so.
So technically, you're not amending it, since it hasn't been moved yet, but you're moving it with 20 instead of 25.
Yes, that is what I am doing, thank you.
And, and Mr. Aluska, is that doing what?
It's, and it's within the streets that work, it's within the West Main Street East.
I just want to make sure we're clear, the way the ordinance is drafted, if I'm not mistaken, the minimum setback is 25 feet, you're telling to move the minimum to 20. There's no maximum under the current draft.
I think she said 10 to 20.
10 to 20, okay.
That's what I was intending.
It'd be a minimum of 10, maximum of 20, and that's the range will be 10 to 20. Okay. As long as we're, I want to make sure everybody's clear.
Although the other thing, I mean, actually, my intention was to keep it, I didn't realize that 25 feet was a minimum. I was thinking it more of as a bill-to line, but they were saying that that's a minimum, so it could even be further back than 25 feet. Okay. I would say, I would like to establish that. I mean, I understand the Planning Commission wanting to have it more, and 10 feet is too, it goes against the Tree Commission, so.
15 to 20.
15 to 20 feet.
That would be a 15 minimum, 20 maximum, okay.
That okay? All right, so that's a motion.
That's a motion with amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second that, I think.
I think, or?
Well, no, I'm just making sure that the original recommendation that we had from staff was something I was very comfortable with, and this, from what I understand, is getting us closer back to that, is that correct? And I think it looks to me, from the correspondence that we've seen and the discussion that we've seen, that although I really appreciate what the Planning Commission has done here, and I admire their commitment to trees, I think that this is more consistent with that neighborhood and really with what we're trying to get in that area, so I'm fine with this motion, and I second it.
Okay, that's a motion made, properly seconded. So we can move on, anybody have any burning comments they'd like to make?
No.
Okay, I support it.
Okay, and just one more thing to reiterate, is that the idea being is that we're creating a street that has a spatial character to it, and it's very important, and I think this is what staff was getting at, is that like faces like, what's going on each side of the street is very, very important, and I do appreciate staff for picking up on that. It's not only the historic character of the entire Ridge Street, but as you get to that intersection, that character is also important to preserve.
Okay. Terrific, very good. All right, moving on. Next item, last item on the agenda before other business matters by the public, is number five, resolution. We have, this is a first of first readings, the proposed Vinegar Hill Park Plaza Resolution in name, provide $15,000 for signage. The Stallwarts, Edwina St. Rose and Melanie Miller presenting, we're glad to see you. We have 15 minutes allocated for this, it's going to be a good 15 minutes.
Good to make that ask, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Edwina St. Rose, co-chair of the City's Historic Resources Committee. I, business address is 245 Ridge McIntyre Road, a road that cuts through what was the heart of Vinegar Hill. For approximately the last four years, the Historic Resources Committee has been discussing the best way to memorialize the once predominantly African-American community that was raised as part of urban renewal. Earlier this year, we reached a consensus that the city-owned area in front of the Omni Hotel would be the best place to tell the story of this former historic neighborhood. We have since learned that the original plan for the downtown mall, designed by landscape architect Lawrence Halpern, included a park area in the space now occupied by the Omni. To help us with this project, we enlisted the assistance of Elizabeth Meyer, a local scholar of Lawrence Halpern, who will serve as an advisor and landscape architect Laura Knott, who designed a concept plan for the proposed Vinegar Hill Park that encompasses the plaza on West Water Street, the plaza at Old Preston Avenue, and the linear walkway in front of the Omni Hotel. To help us tell the story of the historic neighborhood in a series of interpretive markers and on the HRC website, we also sought the assistance of Dr. Scott French, a digital public historian and former UVA professor, who documented the history of the Vinegar Hill neighborhood in his comprehensive study, The Vinegar Hill Project, and in the film, That World Is Gone: Race and Deplacement in a Southern Town. In order to implement the proposed concept plan, the Historic Resources Committee is asking, one, that city council officially name that portion of the city right away that encompasses the two plazas and the area connecting them as Vinegar Hill Park. And two, that city council identify and approve $15,000 in funding to install signage to identify the area. And HRC co-chair Melanie Miller will now provide details about the proposed concept plan. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. We would just like to add that we held a informational meeting to judge interest from members of the public, and then also invited various city task force and boards that may have an interest in this project, and we received a ton of support and a lot of enthusiasm. People had a lot of great ideas for acquiring additional land and expanding it, et cetera. But what, what we'd like to do is ask for this initial designation and the funding of the wayfinding signage now, and then also ask you to entertain the idea of in the future, a second phase that could develop the area more as a park and could be even more robust than this initial step. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think, I mean, one of the things that, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your hard work, I know you all are working diligently on this, and I just want the public to understand that while I'm very pleased with the $15,000 that we've allocated, the markers that will now be on the mall, and I saw the great piece on M C 29 this weekend, I do think that we have to continue to inform the community about the importance of Vinegar Hill. This is not something that can just be identified, even quantified with the marker. For the young people in our community, or even some of our elders or those who fall in between, they need to understand the significance of this community and the impact that it had on the entire city. So I look for, I look at this more so as just a start, in that we are going, I hope that we are going to continue to figure out different and creative ways that we can truly show the vintage brilliance of Vinegar Hill.
I do have a question, if I may.
And this is.
And just to make sure, how, I would like to know, and maybe for the public's benefit, how will this initial plan be coordinated with the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission on race and public space?
You all may not be in the best position actually to answer that.
If you're not, maybe it's, maybe it's Mr. Jones, so.
I think that would be on staff to make sure that there's alignment, and then of course, once the discussion happens with the city council, any sort of funding that would be allocated beyond what is being asked for now would have to be approved by the city council.
But they did vote to support this proposal.
This proposal, yeah, but there's been some discussion about other things that could be done in the future.
I'm just a little bit acting more like, I guess, someone who's aware of architectural kind of processes, that if you go down this line and you start picking signage and style and everything, and then there's another group that comes in, and they're thinking holistically as well, and the signage isn't being coordinated, you've got, you've wasted some money here. So that's, I think is an important coordination question to ask.
Yeah, so I don't know if that was in your packet, but we have a concept plan that mirrors the signage that's already been approved for the downtown mall.
Okay.
For the signage we're asking for tonight, and the only thing that would be excluded, and we don't have design yet, would be the four markers that, you know, begin to tell the story of Vinegar Hill, and.
And those are consistent with the downtown mall.
The wayfinding signage.
With our wayfinding throughout the city.
And that would have to be approved that way anyway, so, okay.
Right.
All right, good, thank you.
So do we have a motion, and then we can have further discussion after the motion?
So moves.
I'd like to make a, and second.
Okay.
I think Mr. Bellamy was moving there.
Motion by Mr. Bellamy, second by Mr. Fenwick. Is that okay? Mr. Bellamy, is that words in your mouth? Are you cool?
Why don't you, why don't you officially do it? Officially make the motion.
I want.
I would officially like to make the motion, so. And second.
Okay. I have a comment, I'm not sure if I have a couple others. I want to thank you guys, especially both of you. Ms. Miller, you put a huge amount of time in your commission and the vision of the city and protecting the heritage, but this is more, this is a constructive thing, this is looking forward, it's just something new, but also old, of course. I want to thank you for the work that's gone into that. Ms. St. Rose, you just are a titan of activism on behalf of our past here, and I, so many people so appreciate both the kind and the quality of your work, and I just really appreciate what you're doing for our memory of our past and how constructive. constructive it is, but also perceptive and probing, and it's just very, very, very good. And, and it's wonderful that people like you doing this. I wanted to say, this was very delicately done, because this could have happened two or three months ago or, or earlier, but we wanted, we had a couple conversations about making sure that the architectural work here would marry, so this, this continues the downtown mall, but it's not exclusive with whatever we, we end up doing. We're gonna get recommendations, Blue Ribbon Commission, but that falls to us. So the RFP or other memorial, uh, interpretive installation, something that's been talked about, all those would be something new, but this just continues the aesthetic of the, of the downtown mall, but in a way that, that adds to our knowledge of our history and narrates it. And I think that's, I s- I strongly support it on, on every front. I do not, I think Mr. Bellamy is absolutely right. It begins to get the public storytelling right. It is not the end. This will never end, probably, telling this story and being alert and alive to it and aware of it and figuring it out. So I, I, with that condition, I'm very clear, I'm just, I'm very glad that we got to this.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to add-
Hey, you beat me out on the second.
When did I, when's the last time I beat you out on anything?
Just now, just now.
I'm flipping a coin, Mr. Fenwick.
It's gonna be tough to say Mr. Gallo.
I was gonna say you were gonna go with it.
Okay, Ms. Fenwick.
Yeah, really.
Go for it.
Well, I'd like to add Mary Joyce Gala. Uh, this is a triumvirate that sits down there.
Yes, true.
And, and this committee really does, 'cause I'm on the committee, and I'm keeping an eye on you. Um, you do wonderful work, uh, you, you do wonderful coordination, and that was part of what I was talking about earlier, about the coordinating, coordination between the county and the city. Um, when you don't do that, things fall apart really quickly. So, thank you, all three of you.
And I would just simply like to applaud you for bringing on Beth Meyer, uh, to make sure that this is also in keeping with the other historic piece, which is the downtown mall itself, designed by Lawrence Halperin, uh, one of the best landscape architects of, of the last century. So, again, this is just so well done. It's so well done. So appreciate that very mu- very mu- much on so many levels.
Anyone else? Okay.
That's it?
Ready for a vote?
So this one we do vote?
This one we do vote. This is not, this is, okay, first of one reading, okay. On favor, carries five to zero. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Gala. All right, uh, we have now finished with all of our regular items. Uh, we are moving on to other business. Do any of my colleagues have any other business to raise? One, two, three, okay. Now we're going on to last matters by the public. Anyone who would like to speak, please get in line and-
Okay, now you-
Oh, only 'cause he signed up for the wrong thing.
Impatient, Mr. Harden.
All right, thank you. Elliot Harding, Almarle County. Uh, two things quickly. First, in my role as a board member and chairman of the Region 10 Advocacy Committee, I want to second the request of our partners at Impact for the $75,000 appropriation towards the Women's Residential Treatment Clinic. It's a huge priority, and I think it's great work. And the second thing, now, as a resident of Almarle County, I'd like to address the city's appropriations and $6 million surplus. And it sounds like a lot, and it is, but that figure represents a third of something that hasn't really been taken into account. And many see the revenue share agreement as only an Almarle County problem, but it's, I, I would argue it's in the city's best interest to consider renegotiating at this time on your own terms, because you have a significant surplus, which means you provided yourself a buffer so you can absorb some sacrifice and redo the terms. Um, y'all may have rolled your eyes by now, but I'm seeing some significant issues with the agreement itself. It's written in perpetuity, which is a problem. The state's moratorium on annexation undermines the city's consideration, overall purpose of the agreement, and the county isn't really getting anything what it's getting when it's paying for. So whether it's in a sign of neighborly good faith or self-preservation, I, uh, ask you be proactive, um, because if, you know, if you don't, what you have as a good surplus now, down the road, could be a significant shortfall. So, kind of, you know, strike by the iron top, make hay while you can. $6 million is good, probably born next year, and at some point, someone's gonna look around and say, you know what? It's $12 million, it's $18 million, we'd like that money back. And so you can take that time and, and show some good faith. So those are my two things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, were you also signed up for a report?
Okay. Ms. Miller?
As long as I'm here at 11 o'clock. Um, just two things I wanted to bring to your attention. Um, Melanie Miller, 528 Locust Avenue. Um, one is, I think the city should consider, um, commissioning a historic landscape report for the downtown mall. And what this would do would be formalize, um, the history of the downtown mall, which is well documented, but also create a plan for maintaining it. And that way, when things come up in the future, there's already a, a guidebook for parks to use, and they can flip right to it and see, you know, what's the plan when one tree dies? Do you take down every tree? Do you take down all the trees in a bosque, et cetera? So I think that would be a huge benefit for the city. And then, secondly, I think the task, place task force is this incredible asset with a ton of talented people, so I'd love to see us utilize them more. And one way I think we could do that is by having them work on a style guide for the city, so that when various purchases the city makes on a fairly routine basis, kind of all meet our general guidelines, what we want to do for a city from a design perspective, but also everything, from the truncated domes, do we want bright yellow plastic, or do we want stamped concrete? How to, you know, have it thought out in advance. And then when, again, when these things need to be purchased, um, the various departments that are buying things have something to reference. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm Candace Johnson, 423 North First Street. Um, so before coming here tonight, I was told by many peers to stay silent and don't get involved. Um, yet, I've been here all night, and not to put us back on an emotional roller coaster, um, I stand here to, to support women and defend women. Um, the things that have been said, things that I'm not going to quote, because it doesn't offer value to our community, and it doesn't, and it goes beyond locker room speech. Your apology to the community was heartfelt, and as a Charlottesvillean, I totally appreciate it, and I accept it, and thank you. And you acknowledged the LGBTQ community, um, and you boasted your work with them. Awesome. Well done, love it. And that's genuinely great. And you also mentioned your life, how your life has changed, and you have three dollar, three daughters, um, and your wife now, and, but you never really acknowledged who bared the worst comments of them all, which is women. I, I've visited pretty much the world. This, this year, I've been to three continents and six countries, and Charlottesville does not have a good reputation right now. It's very sad. Um, the most common question people ask me is, do you feel safe? And I come from Richmond, Virginia, um, very dangerous town. Um, well, it's debatable due to the events of the past seven years. Our community has no room for the rhetoric used by a member of your chamber. We cannot condone, support, or enable a speech depicting hate towards women. Too much has happened in the past seven years. It's all violence against women nationally, nationally known, on the, on the news. I'll be in California and have to watch a, a story about Charlottesville, and it's horrible to have to, you know, tell them, oh, no, I come from a great town, it's okay. So please, think about the females that you disappoint when you sweep us under the rug, and further excuse, and further excuse men's ability to demote us. Our city's reputation depends on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Quinn, 104 Fourth Street, here in the city. I hope you realize that by setting aside the long debated or long deliberated recommendation of a citizen board informed by a biosurvey of Ragged Mountain Natural Area, you have essentially directed option E to go through some of the most environmentally sensitive areas, which I think contradicts a previous direction from this board. But actually, contradiction, uh, seems to be coming more of the norm. Because, I want to say, do you also realize that a majority of this council regularly overturns planning commission recommendations, Board of Architectural Review, and now, add to that, the Park and Rec, uh, Commission recommendations? Keep that in mind if you start having a dearth of application for citizen boards. Why would people put their heart and soul into the deliberations that those bodies go through only to see them regularly overturned?
Thank you.
George Urban from Almarle County. I'm proud to be part of such a diverse and inclusive community. Uh, that's why I was shocked and dismayed at how quickly so many of our so-called leaders have closed ranks behind Mr. Bellamy before first exploring the impact on our community and hearing the voices of victims hurt by his statements. To simply dismiss critics as a racist mob, as I heard from a member of this council tonight, is to be willfully blind to the damage that's been done. To attempt to cover up these statements, as both Mr. Bellamy and Ms. Zakos did very publicly, and in the case of Mr. Bellamy using his official City Council email account, is a violation of the public trust. And so I stand here tonight to give voice to those afraid to come forward, to a young woman at Almarle High School afraid to be in a classroom with Mr. Bellamy, to concerned parents, to sexual assault victims and anti-LGBTQ discrimination victims who now feel betrayed by those whom they once considered to be their strongest advocates. I believe in forgiveness and redemption. Mr. Bellamy, I don't pretend to know what's in your heart. I'm not here to judge you. But I also know that acceptance of consequences is part of the growth process. And so I ask all of you, as leaders of our community, please do not be blind to or dismissive of the pain, mistrust, and anger that many in our community are feeling.
Thank you.
Mason Pickett, Almarle County. Mr. Bellamy, tonight you've been given the gift of understanding and forgiveness. As Ms. Zakos has said, Seville is a city of second chances. I hope the council will take that same path when the statutes are discussed. I wasn't ready tonight to discuss this avenue, because I like to have my facts exact, not opinions, but facts. There are a lot of opinions that went down at all of those meetings, from both sides, citizens and the Blue Ribbon people. Facts are what we're looking for. Um, I think Mr. Lee, I think Lee was known to have taught blacks after the war to read and write, which, which was needed to vote. I'll be heading back down to Washington, Ali, to get some information. I went there before the first meeting. I found there's some interesting stuff. He was a Bible fellow. There's some really strange stuff in the Bible about slavery and torture, uh, beating of slaves. We have to judge a person by the standards of then, not the standards of now. So I invite anybody and everybody to go with me to Washington, Ali. Nice day, and nice sweater.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're done.
I would actually like to respond to the, um, just for the public's kind of edification, the, the comment about the, um, revenue sharing. Um, there, it's come up, one of the, uh, Board of Supervisors brought it up in the newspaper last week or week before, and now it's come to our council meeting, actually, I guess he left. But, um, I think one thing that people forget is that the, the county residents voted on revenue sharing. It was a time when the count, when the city was poised to annex Pantops and 29 North, um, an area that would have been very profitable for us to annex. It's the primary economic generator now of the county. And we gave up that ability to annex in exchange for revenue sharing, for a proportion of the profits that would be made off of that area, um, in perpetuity. Every year, we hit a cap on revenue sharing. That means that they're actually making far more in, in revenue from those areas than they anticipated, and so they're actually getting a really good deal, um, over that, over the years. So I think that I would only be interested in, in revisiting it. There, there is a clause under state law that counties can agree to annexation, and that there could be an agreement between a city and a county to, to do annexation. And so if we want to go back to where we were when we negotiated that, this in perpetu- in perpetuity settlement, um, I think that we would have to go back to the original conditions. And so I would be happy to enter into those negotiations if the county were willing to annex to the city Pantops and 29 North.
Um, I do have one comment that I would, I would appreciate if we could get some follow-up, Mr. Jones, by the, uh, about the request that Ms. Miller made. One was about getting an historic landscape report for the downtown mall that would then assist with giving direction on its maintenance. And the other was, um, uh, she can, she would like us to consider using place to work on a style guide for the city. Um, I'm not sure if that came from the, from her capacity as the chair of the BAR, but if we could get some, a little bit more firmness on what that would be, um, and we'd also need to know what it would cost to do the landscape plan. But I think it's, it's very valid, um, given that we've always had troubles trying to figure out how to find the right materials, for example, to, um, repave and re, um, the, the two crossings that have automobiles over them. And that's still not quite resolved.
One can tie.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, we're done. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.